We'll fire up the.
Are you there, Brian? Can we shoot him a text or something?
Supervisor Onetto, when you get a chance, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay Supervisor Onetto is unmuted and can chime in whenever.
Hello.
All right, Brian. All right, so is everyone ready to go? We rolling tape? Okay, call this meeting to order for the Amador County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, January 4th, 2022, and the board met in closed session on item 1A, direction was given. Item 2A, conference with labor negotiators, direction was given. Item 3A, Mark Etze versus County of Amador, direction was given. And on item 3B, County of Amador versus Kathleen Allison, CDCR Mule Creek State Prison, update was given. And the item 4A, the confidential minutes were approved, so please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag. United States, America. One nation.
Okay, so moving on to our regular agenda. Public matters not on the agenda, discussion items only, no action will be taken. Any person may address the board at this time upon any subject within the jurisdiction of the Amador County Board of Supervisors. However, any matter that requires action may be referred to staff and/or committee for a report and recommendation of possible action at a subsequent board meeting. Please note there is this three-minute time limit. Any board members want to comment?
Supervisor Forrester? Just a quick comment, I'm just going to reiterate comments that have been made before, just really giving a lot of praise to our public work staff for all of the work that they've been doing on the road, snow plowing, tree removal, along with many others, but you know, it would really put a dent in their holidays and unfortunately, that's when the storm hit. And I want to give a big thanks and shout out to all of our road people, road crew, and those that were pulled from other areas and put back into service.
If I may add on to that, Chairman, I also like to thank the Sheriff's Department. They have gone above and beyond their call of duty in the aspect of checking on people, going into backcountry with their ATV machines and checking on people, bringing them help when it's requested. And also Red Cross for assisting us with the warming center at Mesa Meadows. They've, we're averaging about seventy-five people a day coming there and getting help. Anything from charging their CPAP machines to, you know, just a cup of coffee and some somewhere warm to be. So it's very much appreciated what Red Cross and our Health and Human Services have done to assist us. This has been a very trying time for a lot of the people in the upcountry, dealing with everything from the roads. I have a little bit of, I've been continuous conversation with PG and their lack of safetying areas up in the upcountry. They're getting things fixed as they can, but for so much of the time, we even had a tree hanging on a PG wire sitting in, right off our fire station. So our fire station had to go around it to get into their own fire station. And so this is, this will be a continuing process for a long time.
You brought them up too, but Amador Fire Protection District and the other first responders that have been so active up there too.
Conservation camp crews.
And our Pine Grove Conservation Camp, yeah, they've, they went up into Amador Pines, Sierra Pines and helped out a lot. I have a little story is that I had one person email me that they were stranded, they couldn't get out in any way because the road crews couldn't get in to clear it because it was a downed tree. So one of our deputies took it on his own initiative and hijacked a PG crew and told them to take care of it. But all went good and we got everything fixed.
Great. Any other, go ahead Supervisor Crew.
No.
Okay. Any other public comments from the public, Bill?
Yeah, I have some.
Okay, Brian?
I'd like to echo what was said about the road crew. There's a guy known Volcano, he's kind of, he's a hard-charging, hard-working guy and he told me, man, he's that road crew years, he's there, they're, I don't remember quite exactly what he said, based there kicking rear and he says, he was impressed. And for him to be impressed, I was impressed because he's, yeah, they're doing a hell of a good job. So, yeah, the road crew, they worked hard, bad storm. Also, you know something else that kind of came through on this? You saw the public, government can only do so much for society. When you get something like this, government can't do it all, PG can't do it all. And I saw a lot of homeowners, or just, you know, just people up, residents, taking care of each other and like I has heard that Timber Ridge up there did a lot of work on Amador Pines. I believe no charge and that's where it is in that subdivision. And you had other people. I heard Bob Findus out helping too and just a lot of individuals went out there and they were clearing roads, clearing trees, you know, so basically everybody kind of pitched in and that's what it really takes because no one entity can do it all when something's that big. So also another item, Congressman McQuintock's wife Lori passed away. And I think it would, it'd be good to have a moment of silence and respect for her if we could.
Okay, let's have a moment of silence for Congressman McQuintock's wife that passed.
Yeah, her name is Lori McQuintock.
Lori McQuintock, thank you Supervisor. Okay, thank you Supervisor Onetto.
If I may add one more thing Chairman.
Sure.
Jeff Campbell, Construction, that was a big asset that we had up in the upcountry for assisting and getting a lot of, you know, the smaller roads opened up with their equipment. It was very much appreciated.
Okay. Is there any other public comment from the public? Any Zoomers?
Not at this time.
Not at this time? All right. Well, we're going to move on to the approval of the agenda for the time being. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Motion from Supervisor Forrester, second by Supervisor Crew to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Now the consent agenda, there are two changes. Item 8M is going to be pulled and placed with item 5D. It'll be 5D prime. So when we pass 5D, we can have a motion on what was item 8M. The other is item 8H. This will be pulled. Do we want to discuss that immediately prior to the consent board? Or do we want to put it on?
I would put it with that other item.
Immediately. Let's just discuss it now. So that's item 8H.
Can I ask a question on procedurally, does 8M being pulled have to be addressed before regular agenda item 5E is addressed?
No.
Well, yes, I guess it should be, yes, because it is.
Or after.
It doesn't have to be simultaneously, but 8M technically appoints a person who's not eligible until that change to the bylaws is made.
Okay, so we need to address 5C prior to 8M?
Yeah, you can do them at the same time.
I thought it was 5D.
Excuse me, it's not 5E.
5D.
5D.
That's the change in the bylaws.
Yes.
So it'll be 5D prime. So as soon as we approve the bylaws change, then we can approve that appointment.
Very good.
So let's discuss item 8H, which is approval of authorization level granted to the public works. Is that, is that the one, 8H or is it?
No, it'd be the premium pay, isn't it?
Yeah, I thought so, it's 8H.
8H is the premium pay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm looking at 5H. Yeah, 8H. You have that ordinance on as 5G if you want to put it there. Oh, is it? Yeah. Put it right there. The ordinance is the one that actually would implement, so the consent item is just the justification for providing it, and then when you approve the ordinance, if you approve the ordinance. That's for the elected officials. Yeah. So this is premium pay for all elected officials, isn't it? That includes supervisors.
Well, this is just a justification for it. This is, so we passed, we've passed a similar item for each different group, all the, everybody from the rank and file to law enforcement.
I was just trying to get this item addressed right now.
It's a requirement, it's a, it's a federal requirement. Should we address it separately? You can do it whenever you want. I just, since you had, it sort of went with. But it might be a little bit confusing because 5G is just for the elected officials excluding the sheriff and county supervisors, correct? Yes, but the consent item doesn't actually pay anyone anything. You have to change the ordinance to make the payment.
His question was on 8H, so why don't we let Mr. May address that right now?
8H?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, why don't we address it now? Bill, do you want to comment on it?
Well, can we do that and then still take it up after we do 5?
Let's just deal with it now.
We can address that separately.
Okay. Okay, basically, I want to know what the justification is on 8H. You say you're going to give a justification. Is it because you want the money? Or is there a real reason why it's justified? And I also would point out that under 5G, most of the elected officials are already going to get a wage increase and that is premium pay and it's going to be on top of that. A lot of citizens out there would like to get any of this piece of money.
Well, the premium pay is a one-time payment and it's for those that have had to expose themselves to the pandemic on a daily basis. So I think that that's what we've been doing and that's one of the.
Frank, all of us have to expose ourselves on a daily basis. I don't get any premium pay for it.
You know, there were probably between five and ten cases in this building and there's probably more actually, so.
Employees are still being affected, but Bill, here's the agenda item. I don't know if you had a chance to read the justification. But I printed out a copy for you. So it's got multiple pages of the justification for the premium pay.
Well, I don't want to belabor the item or the issue, but it just seems to me with a whole lot of people out there, you know, out money, they're out in some cases homes, they're out food, shelter, and you guys get premium pay. Just somehow it didn't strike right with me.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment on this? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion on item 8H.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Forrester, second by Supervisor Crew. I guess we should do a roll call.
Thank you. Chairman Axe?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Forrester?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Crew?
Aye.
And Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Okay, I'll entertain a approval of the motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
So move.
Okay, motion by Supervisor Onetto, second by Supervisor Brown. Could we have a roll call vote too Heather?
Thank you Chairman Axe.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Forrester?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Okay, so we're moving on to the regular agenda, 5A, passing of the gavel and presentation. So this will be to the incoming chair and I will just move at this point. I think we're going to do a shift. This is part of the diagram of the play.
So. Before you leave Supervisor Axe, you can set your things down if you'd like. Well, I'm going to sit down here because one thing I noticed when I was on Zoom on the special meeting last week when the pledge was done is you can't hear what's being said at that point, so I don't want to stand here and not be heard. So this is a customary passing of the gavel, but with that comes honoring our chair of the last year. It always is sometimes trying, but it's different being chair. You have to focus on the meeting rather than multitasking. I tend to multitask and listen to the agenda, but look at my phone because sometimes there's messages coming in relative to the meeting and as chair, you really can't do that. And you did a good job Frank and Supervisor Axe. And with that, here is a gavel and a plaque to commemorate your year as chair.
All right, thank you.
Job well done Frank.
Now we're going to try the fire drill.
Yeah, now we can shift.
Is that a version of the fumble risky?
Yeah.
Does this should end too? All right. Okay.
And with that, we are going to move on to our second regular agenda, item 5B. Update by Amador County Health Officer Dr. Rita Kerr on the COVID-19 situation in Amador County. And Dr. Kerr, let's bring your picture up. There you are.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
Excellent.
Good morning.
Good morning Chairman Forrester and Board of Supervisors, Community of Amador County. In the new year here, able to come and update you on the situation of COVID-19, which continues to impact Amador County. In calendar year 2021, to date, 2,813 confirmed cases of COVID-19 for Amador County residents, excluding Mule Creek State Prison inmates, and that's an increase of 169 confirmed cases since my last update to the board three weeks ago. The total confirmed cases to date are 4,046. Amador County residents that are known to have been hospitalized because of COVID-19 to date are 288, which is an increase of nine since my last report. And we have confirmed one pediatric multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children case so far. Currently hospitalized because of COVID in Sutter Amador Hospital are seven patients, five of whom are Amador County residents and two who reside elsewhere. And additionally, three Amador residents are currently hospitalized outside of the county. All three of those outside of the county are in intensive care and at least a couple of them had to be transferred from our emergency room to another hospital out of the jurisdiction because of lack of ICU beds here. The daily regional ICU availability for the greater Sacramento area has been about fifteen to twenty percent of ICU beds available on any given day over the past week. It was reported yesterday that one county, Napa County, has zero ICU beds available yesterday. For Amador County hospitalizations that I just reported, all of those folks were unvaccinated. Since my last update, Amador has confirmed three additional, excuse me, reports, three additional resident deaths due to COVID-19. Two of those were confirmed deaths, which means they had a laboratory test done at a certified lab that confirmed the presence of the virus. And one of those three had had an antigen test at a clinician's office, but no confirmatory clinical lab test. So that is considered a probable death and those do not get officially reported on our, on the dashboards. But because we are seeing more and more probable antigen cases, we are going to start talking more about probable cases and the sequelae of that. All three of those individuals who passed were unvaccinated. Two were females, one was a male in their sixties to seventies. So the total confirmed deaths to date are sixty-two Amador County residents and nine Mule Creek State Prison inmates due to COVID-19. And public health expresses our sympathy to all who have been grieving the loss of the loved one, especially over the recent holidays. As the Omicron variant surges, all of the United States is at the high red level of COVID-19 transmission on the CDC map. And Heather, if you could bring up the bar graph Epi curve, thank you. Amador has been absolutely seeing increasing case trends since the holidays. We are not yet approaching our peak from August, which was 655 cases. But we have been, you know, it went downward in September, October, November. November's case total was at 181. And so far for December, we're at almost 250 case episodes and that likely will go up some due to the data lag. The weekly totals over the course of the month of December started at 29 cases, then forty-three cases, sixty-two cases. And the most recent week's total, which was the week following Christmas, the 26th of December through January 1st, is currently at ninety-three and that is the one that we're still working and confirming case episodes from that week. About 200 tests were collected yesterday at the OptumServe site and we are seeing a significant positivity rate, so we expect to see an increase there. There are currently 115 active Amador County resident cases in isolation, so that includes both confirmed cases and probable cases, that is the laboratory confirmed plus the antigen positives that are supervised antigen tests. We do not have visibility into home test results because those don't get reported to us. Amador County Public Health has been working with our epidemiologist and Heather, if you could bring up the pie chart graphs. We're going to be refreshing our data table on the Amador COVID website in the new year. So these pie charts show an example. We want to get a little bit more graphic representation of what's been going on. And I know it's been asked, you know, where are the active cases? So on the left-hand side is of that 4,046 total cases through the course of the pandemic, where the geographic distribution is. And when we post these charts, we'll have exactly which zip codes are contained in each section of the pie. The active cases by region will include both confirmed cases and probable cases for the prior 10 days. And so we kind of know what's, you know, as things move through different areas, we'll see that shift. Again, we don't have visibility into the home tests for this data as well. We are seeing more and more of the probable cases because of, you know, just inability for people to access testing readily. In the context of high transmission and a high pre-test probability, people who have symptoms, who test positive with an antigen test, we say, okay, you've got it, isolate, let's start notifying your contacts. And we don't require them to go get a confirmatory lab test. Amador County confirmed our first case of the Omicron variant last week. This new variant spreads more easily than most prior strains of the virus, including Delta. We, preliminary estimates are that it's two to four times more transmissible than Delta, which was already highly transmissible. Whether or when Omicron will overtake Delta is still being monitored. Both strains are currently circulating here locally in the state and in the nation. The relative severity of illness that Omicron causes is also being followed closely, particularly since hospitalizations usually lag behind infection by a couple of weeks. We have been noticing that infections in persons with prior immunity, either from vaccination or prior infection, tend to be milder than infections within those who did not have immunity. And it's also being studied and it's starting to emerge that people who have prior immunity are infected for less amount of time, their immune system starts to clear the virus out more quickly. We are seeing a higher percentage of breakthrough infections. Omicron has immune escape tendencies. But being fully vaccinated and getting a booster when eligible is still the most effective way of preventing severe illness, hospitalization and death from COVID. And because Omicron is so much more transmissible and we're seeing such steep rises in case rates, even if it's less severe, a smaller percentage of a larger number, you know, that tend to be hospitalized is still a very significant impact to the hospital system. Additional recommendations, in addition to vaccination, to prevent the spread of the Omicron variant are the same as what we should have already been doing, indoors, maximize ventilation. And currently, under the state guidance, everyone is required to wear a mask indoors when in public. Outdoor activities are safer than indoors, but if you can't keep your distance in a crowd, masking is still advised. Wash your hands often and stay home when you're sick. Testing is another key layer of mitigation and is becoming more widely available with many at-home options now on the market. A limited allocation of rapid antigen test kits for home self-testing have recently been made available by the state, which are being distributed to local agencies for their clients who may otherwise have difficulty accessing tests. The state also provided county offices of education with home test kits to offer to their students prior to return from the winter break. Last week, the CDC issued updated guidance for the duration of isolation and quarantine for COVID, shortening those periods with the realization that, number one, Omicron tends to hit faster and be cleared quicker. And it hits so many more people that unless we shorten that isolation and quarantine period, there'd be so many people infected or exposed that there are certain key segments of society that probably wouldn't be able to continue to function. California Department of Public Health has adapted that guidance for the general public as follows. Isolation for someone who has tested positive may be discontinued as soon as five days if symptoms are improved and a follow-up antigen test is negative. Those who are contacts, close contacts, may discontinue quarantine five days after their last exposure if they are asymptomatic and test negative on day five. For both of those situations, the person who's released after the fifth day must continue to wear a well-fitting mask when around others for a full 10 days to add that additional layer of mitigation on the, you know, as there's a small chance they could still be contagious and spreading intermittently. Those who decide not to test or cannot achieve a negative test must stay in isolation or quarantine. And if you don't test, it has to be at least 10 days. If you test positive on day five, but then, you know, test again, say on day. If you um, test positive on day five, but then, you know, test again, say on day seven, and then achieve a negative test, you can be released once your negative test has been accomplished. Those who have ongoing fever or worsening symptoms need to stay in isolation until they feel better, that has not changed. Individuals who have been vaccinated but are due for a booster. And those who had a prior infection, even within the prior ninety days, must quarantine if they have a close contact COVID exposure. That is because of Omicron's propensity for immun evasion. Those who have gotten their vaccine booster and been brought up to date with vaccine status are expected to have a high enough level. Of circulating antibodies that they do not need to quarantine after a close contact. But they do need to monitor for symptoms and are advised to test on day five regardless, just to make sure they don't have a low-level asymptomatic infection. For healthcare, congregate and other high-risk settings, there are other specific requirements for isolation and quarantine that I'm not going to get into here, it's a lot of detail. Updating on COVID nineteen vaccines. By Christmas, for Amador County, over fifty thousand doses of COVID nineteen vaccines have been administered in the year since we started giving COVID vaccines. Vaccine demand for, in the county has remained steady over the past few weeks, still mostly for booster doses. And at this point, over seventy-one hundred Amador residents have had boosters. The average first doses given per day were fifteen to twenty over the past few weeks was, which was a bit lower than the uptake during November. But also, this is a weekly average, and since we had a couple days um, closed over the holiday weeks, that has brought the average down a bit. The highest priority remains for those who are still unvaccinated to get protected. COVID vaccines are available and free for everyone age five and older. And overall, at this point, thirty-four point six percent of the population age five and older in Amador County have not had any doses of COVID vaccine. The age group breakdown of the unvaccinated is as follows. Eighty-nine percent of five to eleven-year-olds. Fifty-six percent of twelve to seventeen-year-olds. Fifty-two percent of eighteen to forty-nine. Twenty percent of fifty through sixty-four and twelve percent of those age sixty-five and older. Approximately thirty-seven hundred Amador County residents have had one dose and still are needing to get their second dose to complete that primary series. It is important to complete that second dose to have protection against serious illness and hospitalization. We have seen um, more uh, cases require hospitalization after one dose than after two doses of vaccine. And of course, unvaccinated is high, much higher than either of those categories. As of yesterday, the FDA issued emergency use authorization. That anyone aged twelve and older will be eligible to get a booster dose of COVID vaccine. And that is just pending an update of the CDC guidance that committee will be meeting um, later this week to officially review the recommendation. Go over the data and more, more than likely will endorse it. Also yesterday, the FDA shortened the time interval after a primary series of Pfizer. Now a booster dose will be able to be given five months after that second dose, rather than waiting six months again to try and raise that antibody. Tighter um, in the context of the widely circulating Omicron variant. For J and J, it remains two months after the primary dose, for Moderna, six months after the series for the booster dose timing. Everyone age sixty-five and older and anyone over age fifty with underlying illness are the most strongly advised to get a booster dose. Because they are at highest risk for complicated COVID nineteen. The mix and match option to choose a different vaccine for the booster than you got for your primary series remains available. And the no-cost COVID vaccine clinics this week at the Health and Human Services Building, Suite five hundred, back entrance are today. Thursday, Friday and Sunday between nine AM and six PM. All three brands of vaccine are available for any dose, including for the children age five and older and also for boosters. The best way to schedule is to visit myturn.ca.gov to schedule an appointment at these clinics. Walk-in opportunities may be limited. Um, it's toughest first thing in the morning, a lot of people want to get that walk-in right at nine o'clock, and that's when we have the, you know, the most appointments. So wait an hour or two into the clinic, they also cannot accommodate walk-ins midday during their lunch hour. And if you do want to come for a walk, and you have to arrive before five-thirty PM. In order to, you know, register, get your dose, be observed and, you know, be done by six. For those who are coming for boosters, please bring your vaccination card or a copy of it, a photo of it. Or a digital verification showing the dates of your previous doses. Some retail pharmacies also continue to offer COVID vaccines, and the easiest way to find that is to visit vaccines.gov for availability and appointment scheduling. The public health COVID nineteen mobile vaccine team continues to focus on homebound individuals. And a nurse visit may be scheduled by calling public health at two oh nine, two two three, six four oh seven. I'm going to go into a little bit more about the uh, therapeutics for COVID nineteen, because that's been a active area in the last three weeks. At this point, two antiviral medications that can be taken by mouth have both been granted emergency use authorization. By the FDA for use in persons with mild to moderate symptoms. Who have a high risk for, or progression to more serious illness. Initial supplies of these medications are very limited, and they are being allocated to counties based on our population size and our case rate. Both of them require a prescription, and they need to be started within the first five days of COVID illness. And um, picked up at a pharmacy. Um, and we have to have dedic- uh. Delegated the pharmacy, they have to register with the system, and then they get their shipment allocation, so the prescribers are being kept um, apprised of which pharmacies have. These medications in stock, and after the prescriptions written, they transmit it electronically to the pharmacy, they'll instruct uh, for pickup instructions. Another therapeutic is a long-acting monoclonal antibody injection. That is given um, emergency use authorization for use in severely immunocompromised individuals. Uh, for example, organ transplant patients. And this antibody is expected to have a duration of about six months of effect, and it's for people who um, would not otherwise be able to mount an immune response from vaccination. It is only available regionally currently in Sacramento and Modesto and requires a physician referral for the injection. Locally, we do continue to have the monoclonal antibody infusions available at Sutter Amador Hospital for high-risk individuals. And that one has to be given within ten days of symptom onset. For those who are at high risk but not yet sick enough to require hospitalization. Um, that landscape is changing a little bit on this because with um, the Omicron emerging. Some of the uh, prior monoclonal antibody products are no longer going to be effective. And if there's a limited supply of uh, the one product that is effective, but Amador has gotten some allocation of that product. And we're in regular communication with the hospital and emergency room about our relative percent, percentage of cases and which product they should use. None of these emerging therapies is a substitute for vaccination, prevention is still the best medicine. The OptumServe no-cost testing site at the Health and Human Services Building, Suite five hundred, back entrance. Continues to be open Mondays, Wednesdays and Saturdays from seven AM to seven PM. We're back on the regular schedule, we did a few makeup days during the hospitals because of uh, both Christmas and New Year's falling on a Saturday. When you come to get tested, go to the back entrance and staff will direct you to the testing area. Masks are required, and these are PCR test results available within two to three days. Please pre-register online at L H I dot care or call one eight eight, six three four, eleven twenty-three to register. We've had a big increase in demand for this testing over the past few weeks because of the holidays, and so getting yourself an appointment is really your best bet. They can't guarantee they can accommodate walk-ins, they will accommodate as space allows. As we embark on a new year, please keep taking the recommended steps to protect yourself and your loved ones. Get vaccinated, and when you're eligible, get a booster. Wear a mask in public. If you've been traveling or in crowded places or exposed, get tested for COVID. Anyone who feels ill, even with mild symptoms, should get tested and stay home while awaiting results. If you don't feel great, please isolate. And I'd be happy to um, address any questions at this time.
All right, thank you for the report, Dr. Kerr. And are there any board members with questions, Supervisor Axe?
Uh, yes, Dr. Kerr, uh, thanks for your report, uh, two questions. Uh, if people are testing at home, how's that going to impact uh, our ability to track cases? And then the other question is um. With the time it takes to get results from tests, especially from a laboratory, how's anybody going to get a prescription of? Some of these other, you know, oral medications in time to have an effect?
Two good questions, the first is that um, the case counts uh, that we confirm are, are going to diverge. There will be, you know, a higher percentage of unreported cases over time. And we're really at this point so much more focused on the impact of hospitalizations and work absenteeism. And those are, I think, the metrics that we're going to be more carefully and closely following going forward. Um, the second question is that I think we're going to have to rely more on either rapid molecular tests, which there are some available. For example, the emergency room at Sutter Amador does a rapid molecular test to confirm a case. Um, and a supervised antigen test at a clinician's office is sufficient to prescribe the orals. And so those results are often available within fifteen to twenty minutes. We are working with our local um, clinicians to offer uh, rapid test kits if they have been unable to obtain a supply of their own. We have a supply chain that is available from the state testing task force for that purpose.
Thank you. Any other board member questions?
Just thank you, Dr. Kerr, as always.
Any Zoomers?
No, not at this time.
All right, Dr. Kerr, I have one question, uh, Chair Forster. Um, I know someone who had a rapid test and they were negative, but the rapid test showed that they had antibodies. So um, and they, they feel they did have COVID previously. And they were unvaccinated, but they have antibodies. So um, what is the? What's the uh, issue going forward with vaccination? Should they still get vaccinated if they show antibodies in their system?
Okay, so did, I, I'm not sure if you meant to say that the rapid test showed antibodies or they had a blood draw?
Rapid tests showed they were negative on COVID, but they had antibodies.
I don't know of any FDA-approved test for testing for antibodies. Um, on a rapid test. And all of the um, commercially available laboratory tests for antibodies um, are not considered validated for individual level use. The um, research facilities and the state public health labs do very specific antibody uh, titers. That actually show levels, not just a quantitative, you have them or you don't, but they actually show the levels, and that's how they're studying over time. But the answer really is, in somebody who's had a prior episode of COVID. Really, that first dose of vaccine almost acts like the uh, booster dose. And completing the series gives really the most robust immunity, they call it a hybrid immunity. For anyone who's had a combination of uh, infection and then vaccination. They probably have the best protection um, that can be gotten currently against all strains of COVID. So yes, the recommendation is still for those who've had prior infection to get vaccinated, especially because we are seeing immune escape. And reinfections among those who've had prior infections.
All right, thank you. No further questions? All right, Dr. Kerr, thank you very much for the updates this morning.
You're welcome.
All right, have a good day.
You too.
Yeah, with that, we'll move on to item five C on our agenda. A presentation by Dr. Arnold Zeiderman of the Amador County Behavioral Health Advisory Board Annual Report. Dr. Zeiderman, welcome.
Good morning.
You pull that microphone right down in front of you.
Good morning supervisors, um, I'm pleased to be here. And I wanted to take this opportunity to. See you directly, give you some information that's important, you just. Sat through some very important information, that there's another component to what's going on in our health, in our health system. And I think we could talk about that a little bit because of its impact on the community. So um, as we've done every year, uh, we, and, and we're obligated to do, a report, an annual report goes from the. The Amador County Behavioral Health Advisory Board to the Board of Supervisors. As we are advisory only. And I think every year I've been involved, except last year, I've been here. And I wanted to come today. Because you probably know I won't be here next year. So.
Because you're going off.
Because we're going to.
Be, because you're going off the board, correct?
Right, and hand on the baton. So I sent you a, I know you have a lot to go over, and this one is really difficult to read through. But I wanted you to have some real good content documented. Because we're ultimately talking about a significant amount of funding that needs oversight as we go into the future. So. This board, uh, you know, we were challenged the second year in a row, the Behavioral Health Advisory Board, usually there's about. Ten to twelve members and another ten or so people in the room. We haven't been able to do that since January of two thousand twenty. But we have met every time, we've had a quorum every time. And I think the governance, which has been a focus, has been real good. And a lot of things have been getting accomplished from the board. Unfortunately, the board members can't, you know, be together and interact, and they can't go out and do site visits and things like that. So it's been kind of tough sustaining the momentum, but nevertheless, I think a lot's been accomplished, particularly in the last year. So the report, very brief part at the beginning kind of summarizes, and then there's a lot of content that I wanted you to have. And, and the bottom line, we'll get to. Is about three million dollars of additional funding coming in for behavioral health. It's important that I make sure that you're informed and aware of that, because it will be over a period of four or five years. And I need some observation and oversight. So thank you for the opportunity to serve on this board. It's been a very interesting and a significant part of my professional career. And um, I've had the opportunity to work with a good number of supervisors, and I wanted to thank you for that opportunity. Ted Novelli oversaw the committee at first, and then Lynn, Lynn Morgan, and Frank Axe. Um, and it's been a pleasure working with them, it's been pretty frictionless, and it was a very good experience, and I wanted to thank them. For their interest in oversight. And then I've had the opportunity to also talk with people like Richard. We've had a number of conversations uh, with Brian Onetto. Uh, with Jeff Brown. With Pat Crew. Once in a while, it might have been a cup of coffee, or maybe we ran into each other, but I do appreciate we've had the opportunity. To work together. So let me just focus a little bit. This is a constellation of issues going on in our society now. That are having an incredible impact. Presently and in the future, because they're affecting young people, and they're going to grow older. And this COVID thing will be over. But there are going to be a lot of other problems continuing. So let me tell you what the constellation, there are four major components of the constellation. There's mental health problems. With a very, very weak infrastructure for dealing with it. Homelessness, substance abuse, suicide. They're all kind of related. They're all kind of unpleasant to deal with and difficult. But I just want to make sure. That everybody's kind of up to speed with the idea that these are real significant growing problems that have a tremendous impact. Um, even today, one of the leading newspapers was, was lead article about this issue. And this is a great cost to society. When you look at these problems, mental illness, homelessness, substance abuse. homelessness, substance abuse, suicide, a great cost to society, a great cost to families on a personal level and an economic level. So we're going to all have to deal with this going into the future. But things are much better from my perspective in terms of behavioral health in this county. And I've been overseeing and involved in this since the beginning of two thousand thirteen. You remember that dinner, Richard? So that was nine years ago, eight, nine years ago. It's a long period of time. But I want to give you some positives. So this is my perspective. This is not the official report. This is my perspective as the chair. Improvements noted. Well, first of all, the leadership at behavioral health is just immensely improved. And Melissa Cranwell and Stephanie Bahas, both are terrific people. They do a great job. They've been a pleasure to work with. I assume they're on Zoom. I don't know who's listening. So things are much better in terms of behavioral health from my view. Sutter Amador Hospital, well, you know, they finally, they stepped up, as I told someone one time at a meeting, to step up to the plate. And for a long time, there was a feeling that they weren't really motivated. But they got real motivated, and they're part of the system. And when people go over there for fifty-one fifties, they're getting evaluated or admitted or transferred. They're using telly. So I think that that's really good, and I wanted to compliment them for being part of the system. And of course, you know, when there are mental health crises, they refer within their system if they have the capacity, meaning that they send a patient to Sutter Mental Health in Sacramento. The sheriff's office, it's been great working with them. Jared Benoff is a lieutenant that's been appointed. He's been on the committee for a couple of years. He's a terrific guy to work with, always shares information, very positive. And the sheriff's office is a mandatory person to be on the committee. So Jared is in that role. And if you wonder in what way are things good or better? Well, there's been a, there's a recognition in the sheriff's department that, that when you have to deal with behavior and mental health emergencies, that education's a good thing. They've been getting training under both sheriffs, the last two sheriffs. They've been getting training and basically learning how to deal with a changing society. So I think that's very positive. And then the big thing, of course, is this relationship with the school district. And Sean Snyder has been very helpful. And, you know, basically, we sort of began to realize as a group that there were a lot of deficiencies in what was being provided in terms of diagnosis and treatment of young people in the schools. They basically didn't have the resources, didn't have the materials, didn't have the know-how. And that's what the, that's what this grant is all about. That there's a whole story here. It's all documented. A little bit of it is redundant, but all of the information, if you're interested, on pages two and three and four. But the bottom line is that we've got a grant for two point four million dollars over the course of four years. That's to put counselors and therapists in the schools and have create an infrastructure of education. And then there's another, that's a four-year grant. And so it's two point four million dollars over four years. That money is going to be coming into behavioral health and being essentially spent through the school system. They're going to hire people. And there's another, another portion, a separate grant of innovation funds. And it's another half, another six hundred thousand dollars. It comes to about a little over three million dollars. And I think that's going to be great. But I want to make sure that you know that because somebody for the next four years, please, make sure that that's getting utilized in the best possible way. And perhaps a little consideration to what's going to happen after four years is a good thing to think about early on. If he, if there's going to need to continue. So this, this idea of a relationship between the behavioral health and the school district, I'm not sure anybody else is doing it. Maybe they are. But we're finding it's within this community, and people kind of knowing each other and working. It seems workable. So there's resources coming into the county that go through behavioral health, and they can go to the school system and fill in some very clear deficiencies that we're aware of. And believe me, there are a number of cases out there as a recent issue, I think. You know about there was an immediate threat, a high school student. And you know about that. All right. The second other thing that we did that I thought was very commendable this year, and there were a number of people involved in putting out this out. I want you to understand that if you're a senior person, you live in Amador County, and you're on Medicare, and you have a mental health problem, you want some help, or you have a spouse or parent, older people, they're on Medicare, they can't go to behavioral health here. They can go to the emergency room if it's really bad, maybe get a visit. So what we found out is with this online, that we can actually find some providers. And I found some in Yuba City and in Walnut Creek, I believe. And they will actually see people on Medi-Cal, on Medicare, excuse me, people on Medicare that otherwise cannot access mental health services. And this group got together, they composed this. Steve Christensen and Lynn have been most involved, Lynn Morgan have been most involved in this, and trying to get this out to people. Because, you know, obviously, people are, they're very reluctant. They're kind of don't like to deal with the fact that, you know, maybe someone in the household really needs some help. And they, and especially when you can't get it, that's a great excuse to not pursue it, right? Well, it's not available. So this, this, this could be really good because we have a lot of senior citizens, a lot of people on Medicare. And there may be a therapist from time to time that they can see in the county. But there's no psychiatrist for them to see. Because the psychiatrist that the board was, had the foresight to help hire several years ago, and I think you all remember this, that psychiatrist does work here at behavioral health and at the jail. But they're not available to see somebody down the street from you, Jeff. Okay? All right. So those are the couple of important things that we've done. Let me see what else is on my list here. Let me see if, I don't know, there, there may be other people that want to speak from the, from the committee, from the Behavioral Health Board. They all know about, I informed them of the date and the change and the time. So I don't know whether they're online. I know that Steve Christensen wants to say something. And I also wanted to stop here. And if you have any questions, I'll entertain them now, or if you'd like me to sit down and do it at the end, whatever your preference.
I'd like to go to Zoom to some of the individuals that sit on the advisory committee with you and ask them if they have any comments additional to what you presented. Heather, anyone?
Thank you. Callers, if you're looking to speak, you need to raise your hand, please.
I see Mr., I think Mr. Christensen's on there.
Up at the top right.
So if there's no additional comments, I'll wait for just a moment. Supervisor Axe, you sit on the committee, too. Do you have any comments while we're waiting?
Well, of course, you know, this is, during Arnie's tenure on the committee, he's done quite a bit. And this, a lot of it culminated just this past year, and maybe latter part of the previous year. So he was able to help in identifying funding and work with our Behavioral Health Department on that, and also the providing mental health services for Medicare patients. And, you know, he's just always been out there trying to make the committee as viable and as effective as possible. So he'll definitely be missed. And, you know, he's, again, I can't say enough good things about him.
I see Mr. Christensen has his hand up now. So Steve, I will get you.
Hello there.
Hello, morning.
Good morning. Steve Christensen here. And I wanted to compliment Dr. Zeiderman on a wonderful report, very thorough. And he has been a wonderful leader of the advisory board for the last couple of years. And it's been a very pleasure, very much my pleasure to have worked with him. But as he mentioned, that the people like Melissa Cranford and Cranfield and Stephanie Hess have just been absolutely marvelous. And I admire them greatly. But I think that there is still some holes within the county as far as dealing with people who are seniors or who have just a regular type insurance of being able to get help here in the county. And as we go forward, I hope that the advisory board and the Board of Supervisors can work together to try to fill in some of those gaps. And again, I wanted to thank Dr. Zeiderman for a wonderful job and a great report.
Thank you, Steve. Was there anyone else on Zoom? No? Any board comments or questions for Dr. Z?
Well, Dr. Z, this is Supervisor Brown. I want to thank you for all the conversations we've had throughout the years and, you know, opening my eyes to a lot of the problems that we have in the county. I very much appreciate the education you've given me and everything that is, that you've been doing in this county. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for that, those nice comments. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Zeiderman, for the comprehensive report and for lighting a fire under the Behavioral Health Advisory Committee. I, I've never seen it as active, but it takes someone of your caliber to push sometimes. And I say that politely, but.
Yeah.
Issues need to be pushed sometimes to show their importance and elevate them to Board of Supervisors and throughout the community.
Yes. Well, well, thank you for all those positives. It's really been a pleasure to work with the board. I'm sorry that Brian isn't here now.
He is on Zoom.
I've even enjoyed working with Brian. And, and his brothers. So it's, it's really kind of like a big family here. You know, I've been here a long time now, as you, as you read. And I've been here, my family, twenty-six, going on twenty-seven years. But it's, it's been very nice because I've never had to come to you and demand anything. And I never demanded anything that you couldn't deliver. So, and you, I couldn't expect you to do anything that you don't have the resources to do. That's why I wanted to work closely so we can kind of get educated together and see what the, what the big problem is. And, you know, you see what the big problem is. You heard from Dr. Kerr, we have a, we have this pandemic, you know, it hasn't been a hundred years. We have now this horrible pandemic. And then we have all these other underlying issues that I went into that you're hearing about all the time. There is no quick fix. So that, all those other problems that seem so unsolvable for you with the homelessness, that's a tough one. And the substance abuse is a tough one. But they're all kind of related. So it's going to take everybody working together and within government and in the community to try to think, make things as much better as possible. So I do appreciate you've all been very open-minded. I think I've given you a perspective of where the, where the board is, and hopefully make your, make it so that you'll have a reasonable expectation in a year when someone else comes back to give you an annual report. And I'll see you around the community.
Thank you, Dr. Zeiderman.
Thank you very much.
If you could stay, if you could stay there, because we have a couple of other items to address. But before we leave this item, Heather, do we have any more on Zoom?
I believe Supervisor Onetto would like to speak.
All right.
Yeah, I muted myself, and they wouldn't let me back in the conversation. But anyway, we got that fixed. Yeah, no, I'd just like to thank Mr. Zeiderman for his work over many years. He's always been very diligent, worked very hard for, for his community, for lack of a better term. And there's never any ulterior motive. He was just trying to make, make our county a better county. And I really appreciate his efforts. He's always been very reasonable and hardworking and diligent. And so I really appreciate all your efforts, Mr. Zeiderman, so, or Dr. Zeiderman. So, and thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
And I believe Supervisor Crew has some comments.
Dr. Z, you know I appreciate all you do. I remember when we were fixing flat tires on your Porsche, and you were telling me about the homeless issue and mental health. And I thought, who is this guy? But you drug me along and really opened my eyes to it. You remember those days, too? But again, you're going to be missed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And, you know, it's terribly unpleasant. I couldn't wear this mask all day long.
Dr. Zeiderman, I think.
But as I said, I wanted to, I just wanted to be here, okay? Because I think everybody's on the same page. So we got a little bit of a boost in terms of this.
I think it's very important, what you brought up about opening up professional help for those on Medicare, because a lot of people, it says right on here, feeling stressed, anxious, overwhelmed. A lot of people feel like that, but don't know where to go for services. So I think it's important for the Behavioral Health Advisory Board to keep pushing that issue and opening up access for people.
Yes, I think people agree with you. And I'm expecting they're going to get that. It takes a while to get something like that started in the community, you know? It's something that service people don't really want, and they're a little bit embarrassed about it. They don't know where to get it. So it's a setup for nothing to happen, you know?
Yep.
We need to make that better and more, more permissible and more accessible. And then, of course, if you don't have a, an internet connection, it's, you can't do it, right? So it isn't like everybody can have it. So it's, there are a lot of components to that part of it. But actually, I think it's a real important for the program because, you know, we have a disproportionate number of elderly people in this county.
Yep. Our Rotary Club has had representatives from NAMI speak to us, and it just, it's heart-wrenching to hear their stories about falling into depression and really not knowing where to go.
Exactly.
And then suicide is what sometime becomes the, the result, suicide, attempted suicide.
Yes. Yes.
Well, thank you. Heather, any further on Zoom?
I don't see any.
Okay.
So.
Board members, we. Thank you. Well, Dr. Zeiderman, we're going to move to our next agenda item, which has to do with behavioral health, too. So if you could stay there, please, stay at the mic. For the next two items, actually, three items. The next item is, get my agenda in front of me, Board of Supervisors, ratification of bylaw change to the Amador County Behavioral Health Advisory Board bylaws allowing non-county residents who serve members of the community to serve on the Behavioral Health Advisory Board. And Supervisor Axe, you or Dr. Zeiderman?
Yeah, well, there, the bylaws did not permit out-of-county residents to be appointed. But there was an exception, and that exception was for healthcare professionals who work with residents of Amador County. And what we did is we changed, we struck the, the item that said healthcare professionals and just changed it to persons who work with residents of Amador County. So one of the appointees that we want to approve is a, is a teacher or principal. And, you know, they're not a healthcare professional, but they do serve the residents. So there's a strong connection between mental health and, and schools, or, you know, we want to build that relationship. So basically, the way the bylaws read, board appointees shall be residents of Amador County or by vote of, by vote of the board, and exception may be made to offer membership to persons who work with residents of Amador County but live out of the county. So that's what we want to change it to.
I spoke to, to CIO Eily about this, and he felt that it was approved by the Behavioral Health Advisory Board, but it needed to be ratified by the Board of Supervisors. So any comments, Dr. Zeiderman, before we act on this?
No, I think, I think you should act on it. They say it gives us a little more flexibility. You had to be, had to be a resident of Amador County to be on the board. And you couldn't have a job where there's any direct or indirect money flowing to you. That would exclude you, okay? And you had to be a member. You had to live here. In the past, I In the past, I was able to have, there were a couple of physicians at the hospital, like Dr. Panazis, that does pain, and, but she did, she lives in Rancho Murieta. So for, like, for physicians and nurses, if they worked in the county, but they don't live in the county, they, they were given the exception, they, they were permitted. We're just expanding this. And basically, the reason why is that the new principal at, is it Pioneer or Pine Grove School?
Uh, it's Pioneer, I think it's Pioneer Carmen Glazer.
Yeah, we, we wanted to have somebody, uh, we want to have somebody from the school district, which we started with Sean, but remember I told you about the, the three million dollars coming in and it going to the schools? So we want somebody on the board to be accountable, okay? So we want somebody from the school district. Sean thought that the principal, Carmen Glazer, would be appropriate. And then when we looked at, when, then after we were getting her ready to be, to go on the board, we found out she didn't live in the county. So we think it's a good idea to be a little bit more flexible, the people that are working here but not living here can be on the board. And then Frank decided that he would do it in this fashion.
Okay.
Yeah, while I talked to county council, and this is what he told me.
Right.
I'm just following orders.
Are there any further board comments?
No. So we don't want to, we don't want to put someone on the board that shouldn't be there. We want to make sure everything's done properly, and, and the governance, governance has been a big issue with me and this organization, and we've looked at that every single time we have a meeting, we talk about our governance.
And if you're going to add Carmen to the board, oh, I wholeheartedly approve of that. She is an outstanding principal and really caring, def- person, so please.
All right, well, we're on the same wavelength.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion then to-
Well, hold on, just Heather, any one on Zoom?
Not at this time.
All right, go ahead Supervisor Axe.
I'll make a motion to approve the bylaw change for the Amador County Behavioral Health Advisory Board bylaws.
There's second. Motion by Supervisor Axe, second by Supervisor Brown, to approve the change in the bylaws. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Well, I'll have to do a-
Real call.
A roll call vote, Heather.
Thank you, Chairman Forster.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto.
Aye.
Supervisor Crew.
Aye.
And Supervisor Axe.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, motion carries five zero. We, we had an item on the consent agenda for appointing Ms., um-
Carmen Glazer.
Carmen Glazer, Principal of Pioneer Elementary School to the Advisory Board, so, um, we'll pull, um, item M back into play now, and I don't think there should be much discussion, but, um-
I'll make a motion to approve that appointment.
I will second that.
All right, uh, motion by Supervisor Axe, second by Supervisor Brown, to appoint Carmen Glazer to the Advisory Board, and a roll call vote.
Thank you, Chairman Forster.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto.
Aye.
Supervisor Crew.
Aye.
And Supervisor Axe.
Aye.
All right, motion carries five zero. And, uh, Dr. Z, I have one more item that will need you to stay at the podium, adoption and presentation of a resolution of appreciation and acknowledgement of many years of service and dedication of Dr. Arnold Zideman. So I'm going to approach the, uh, let's see, we have to, we need to adopt this resolution first. If I could get a motion.
So move, second.
The motion was by you, right? Motion by Supervisor Brown, second by Supervisor Axe, to adopt the resolution, and a roll call.
Thank you, Chairman Forster.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto.
Aye.
Supervisor Crew.
Aye.
And Supervisor Axe.
Aye.
Now, we have a resolution for Dr. Z. A lot of us just call you Dr. Z perfectionally, I'm sure you understand that, but whereas, Arnold, Arnie Zideman was born in New York City, where he grew up, and whereas Arnie earned his undergraduate degree from Columbia College in New York City in nineteen sixty-four, he went on to earn his medical degree from the University of Kentucky Lexington in nineteen sixty-eight, and followed up with a residency at Emory University from nineteen sixty-eight to nineteen seventy, at Stanford University from nineteen seventy to nineteen seventy-two, and later he received a fellowship to the University of California Berkeley School of Public Health from nineteen seventy-four to nineteen seventy-five. And whereas Arnie married Peggy R. Scott, and they raised two children, Matt and Ari, is that correct, Ari? And whereas Arnie served in the U.S. Army Medical Corps, One Hundred and Thirty Station Hospital in Heidelberg, Germany from nineteen seventy-two to nineteen seventy-four. He later served at the OBGYN teaching facility at the U.S. Naval Hospital in Oak Knoll, Oakland, California from nineteen ninety-one to nineteen ninety-two. And whereas Arnie established his first OBGYN practice in Arcata, California in nineteen seventy-five. He went on to practice medicine in various places throughout the country, including San Diego, Los Angeles, Oakland, and Worcester, Massachusetts, just to mention a few. And whereas Arnie moved his medical practice to Amador County in nineteen ninety-five, where he ran a solo practice until two thousand thirteen. And whereas Arnie was elected to the Amador County School Board from two thousand to two thousand four. And whereas Arnie volunteered on a number of surgical missions, both domestic and abroad, where he lent his skills as an experienced OBGYN physician to persons in need. And whereas in two thousand fifteen, Arnie joined the Amador County Behavioral Health Board as its chair and served in that capacity until December twenty twenty-one. And whereas Arnie was willing, always willing, to assist the board in its efforts to bring awareness and transformational change to mental health services in Amador County. And whereas Arnie never hesitated to educate himself on mental health issues at the local and state level, he was a collaborative partner to work with and will truly be missed. And whereas Arnie earned his respect and confidence of his colleagues of the board because of his integrity and dedication to his work. Whereas beyond his professional contributions and strengths, Arnie's personal attributes helped him gain the friendship and trust of his peers. Therefore, be it resolved, that the Amador County Board of Supervisors would like to acknowledge and thank Dr. Arnold Zideman for his years of service on the Amador County Behavioral Health Advisory Board. Thank you, Dr. Z.
Thank you. I wish I could take this mask off. So thank you very much. That is very rewarding to me, and it's very meaningful. And as you can tell, I've had a, a varied and interesting life, done a lot of things in a lot of places, but when I got a little bit older, I needed to settle down and have a family, so we moved here, and I've stayed a long time, and I'm probably not leaving very soon. So, uh, it's all very nice to have a, to have appreciation, you know? Frankly, you, you don't, you don't very often get much appreciation in life, I think you all know that as supervisors. Uh, sometimes you should get it and you don't, sometimes you get it and you don't deserve it, but I think this one is pretty balanced. I'm, I'm real comfortable, all the nice things, and I, I'm not going anywhere, I'm still going to be around, and just, I'm not, you know, disappearing. But I just think that it's, after this long period of time, it's, it's best for me to take a break and let some other people, some, step up to leadership. And we're, you know, we're on a good track right now, and with your support, I think that the Behavioral Health Department and the Advisory Board, uh, and the county itself can, uh, confront these important issues that we've discussed, okay? Of the, these are some of the big challenges that you have to deal with, and they're not just infrastructure now, a lot of it has to do with people and their lives and their health. So my best to you, I hope that I've helped you be good supervisors, and I wish you the, uh, the best of success with your families and personal careers, and thank you for all that you do for the county. It's a tough job being a supervisor, and I thank you very much as a citizen.
Dr. Zideman, uh, I know you started in New York City, and I'm glad you landed in Amador County. You've been a great attribute to our county and, um, contributed to making some constructive changes, and, and I know that, uh, that will carry on as part of your legacy and, and , uh, help our community to thrive in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Arnie.
Any further Zoom comments, Heather?
Not at this time.
All right, thank you, Dr. Zideman. At this time, we're going to take a break until ten thirty and come back to our-
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Onetto would like to speak.
Okay, Supervisor Onetto.
I'd just like to reiterate my appreciation for all, all you've done for the community, Dr. Zideman, so once again, thank you, and I'm sure we'll see you around.
Thank you, and we have one more hand up.
We also have a Zoom from Ms. Cranfield. Please go ahead when ready.
I just wanted to, um, just thank Dr. Zideman for all the work that he's done with the Advisory Board and working collaboratively with Behavioral Health, and I think one of the things that's been very helpful is that he was able to get the point across to the Advisory Board and community members and other partner agencies that, um, the Behavioral Health Department has a, a certain population and certain requirements, and that we don't cover all the gaps in the public mental health system, and so being able to identify those gaps and seek out other ways to fill those gaps and with support of Behavioral Health has been very valuable in the work that he's done, and I just wanted to take a minute just to thank him for all that he's done.
Thank you. And, well done. All right, thank you. At this time, we're going to take a break until about ten thirty-one, and we'll come back to our public hearing and our time-certain regular agenda item on code enforcement.
You want to give me heads up when they're, when they're going back in, I'll probably-
I'll probably- Chuck. You want to give me heads up when they're going back in? I'll probably-
And with that, Mr. Piddo is not here, but County Council's Delott?
Yes, Supervisor Chairman. I was informed by Mr. Piddo that this matter needs to be pulled rather than continued because they're not sure when their, some of the underlying issues will get resolved. So, they will go ahead and renotice that when it comes back.
Okay. So, with that, Item Six, Public Hearing, Surveying Department, will be pulled from the agenda and renoticed at a later date for Board agendas. And are we ready at this time to go with the code enforcement issue?
We are. Michelle's putting the-
Okay. Let's go to Item Seven, A. Code Enforcement Discussion and Possible Action Relative to an Appeal Filed by Mr. Brian Matthews Regarding an Administrative Citation Per Municipal Code, Chapter 9.44, Noise Ordinance. Subject Property Is Located at 16957 Emily Way, Sutter Creek. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Gallagher or Staff.
I think Code Enforcement has-
She's making some copies of some of the audio that we're having some issues with. So, she'll be here shortly.
Okay. So, we'll just recess and come back to this item very quickly. I will note for the record today that Supervisor Ornetto is just a bit under the weather, but he is participating in this meeting by Zoom.
Okay, we're ready. Sorry about that. That, we haven't had that issue before.
We'll bring the meeting back to order, and Ms. Gallagher, if you could give a report, please.
Sure.
Thank you for taking the time to-
Have to pull this down slightly so my glasses don't fog up. Oh, still doing it. Michelle Gallagher, Code Enforcement. Good morning, Order Supervisors. We are here today based on an appeal from the Matthews family in regards to violation of the noise ordinance at 16957 Emily Way. What I'm gonna show you up here on the presentation, just to get an idea, a little bit more information, summarize the packet that you received. Right here is the map of Emily Way, of the exact location. The next slide here is the parcel to show where the property lines are. It is a twenty-acre parcel. Just another view from Google to get an idea. The surrounding properties, right now, where the twenty-acre boundary goes around, there's six neighbors located right there along the boundary of it. Not going to the next slide here. That's okay. Ah, there we go. So, out of the, we actually received fifteen complaints now. I just recently just received another one. Originally, that you received it was fourteen complaints. Received fifteen right now, and I do have five sheriff reports regarding the noise being called in. This is the radius of all the complaints are coming from. So, the noise from that property is going out that far to the other neighbors surrounding them. This is just another view to see which neighbors are being affected by the topic of the property with the hills and everything. And so, again, there are over fifteen statements that I received. Those statements say the noise is disturbing and not acceptable in a residential area. It occurs on a regular basis. It disrupts the peace and quiet of our neighborhood. I can hear the noise while I'm outside, and I can hear the noise while I'm inside my home. The other concerns that were addressed on those were it's destroying property value. Somebody used a decimal meter, was used when it was for two to four bikes. It was between sixty-one and seventy-one decibels. This occurs daily after school and on average, four hours a day on most weekends. Multiple bikes being used, up to five at a time, and some bikes don't have spark arresters and present a fire danger. Dirt bikes ridden on county roads, very annoying, unreasonable. Can hear it all the way down Shore reduction road. Has been going on for nine months, and Sheriff Department has received more than five complaints. These are the audios. So, we're only gonna be able to play two of them. The first one, obviously, we couldn't get it to work, but it was screened out for the protection of the kids. No, we're not gonna get it to work. Okay. And talking with the complaints and the owners, they have all tried to talk to each other and come up with some understanding, but that has not worked. So, this does pretty much come down to where I'm hoping we don't have that as an option because all we're gonna be doing is he says, she says. If we tried to have them come up with something when that's not obviously working at this point. So, it's just gonna come down to a yes or no on whether you're gonna allow this type of activity in a residential zone. That's all.
Any questions for Michelle?
As you say residential, is it, I was looking online, it's R1A. Is that correct?
Well, this one is. Let me jump right back to the- Don't want to say the wrong thing. Where are you? It is residential. R1.
One question on the, someone had a chronological from all the way back into November, and it seemed pretty close to what Mr. Matthews said as far as the times that the writing was taking place. There were a few variations. But the one thing I noticed on the complaints is the sheriff's office was called in five times?
They were called more than that. They just stopped responding to it.
So, the five times they responded, though, they didn't look at the issue of the dirt bikes being ridden on county roads?
No, and I did not see that in the report of that being stated by the officer.
Okay. I mean, this is, it's a big issue, not for the people that own the property, but for the neighbors. I had it going on around my place for a while, and in the twenty years I've been on the board, every time this issue comes up, it's huge. Usually, if it was not COVID, usually, we'd have a room full of bike riders, too, advocating for their rights, and most of them just want someplace to ride. I get it.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, when you do it around your neighborhood, it becomes a big issue for the neighbors. So, that's why we're here.
All right.
Any other questions for Michelle?
Yeah, there's some decibel readings taken.
Yeah.
What were those readings? It was like sixty-one, seventy-one, I think?
Yes.
And what does that, oh, relate to as far as noise-wise? A normal conversation, it looks like, in a chart?
I don't know. I would have to look that up. I do know it's, I believe, it is above the noise ordinance, uh, decibel. So, it's-
Cause I've-
It's-
What's the noise, what's the ordinance specify as far as the noise level?
Um, I do not have that in front of me.
It, what it says, the ordinance says, "Under B, unlawful noise, it shall be unlawful for any person to make, continue or cause to be made or continued within the limits of the unincorporated county any disturbing, excessive, or offensive noise which causes discomfort or annoyance to any reasonable person of normal sensitivity."
Yeah.
So, it's not based on decibels?
Well, I was looking at a decibel chart, and that, a normal conversation, it says, is sixty to seventy decibels?
That's normal, Brian, but just like the case we had within the last month of the sawmill up in Volcano, it affects, it doesn't have to reach the decibel level to be annoying or cause discomfort to the neighbors or neighborhood.
And I did get the videos to work now. Do you want to hear the-
Please. Yes, please.
Any other questions?
Yeah, was that taken at the house of the claimant or their property line, do you know?
Uh, it was, that I believe is, were actually from three different complainants. So, I can't tell you exactly their locations. I know one is very close by.
I meant the audio.
Yes. Again, three different complainant areas.
Okay.
All right. Any further questions for Michelle?
Not right now.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Matthews, if you would like to address the board at this time, thank you for being here today. Mr., is it Mr. and Mrs. Matthews?
If you could state your name for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Brian Matthews.
And what is your wife's name?
Uh, Jennifer Matthews.
Alright, thank you.
Members of the board, good morning, thank you for allowing me to be here today. Um, I do, uh, live at the, uh, address listed, uh, in the complaint. My wife and I and our family are new to this county as of about March of last year. Uh, we have five children, of which three are our biological children, ages five, nine, and eleven, and we are in the process of adopting two other children, twelve and seventeen. Those two children came into our lives because I'm a member of the Big Brothers Big Sisters program and the twelve-year-old is a, is a young man that I've mentored for the last couple of years and his parents passed away a long time ago, being raised by his, uh, elderly grandparents who don't have the health, uh, to take care of his needs. So that's why those two extra children are living with us. His older brother's in a similar situation. Dirt bike riding is something that, uh, four of the five children, not the five-year-old, uh, participate in a regular basis, not necessarily always at our property during the riding season. They, uh, go to SAC Raceway and Prairie City and a number of other places, that's where they do most of their riding. Um, out of the four that do ride, all four have bikes, however, it's the nine-year-old, the eleven-year-old, and the twelve-year-old that ride bikes on our property, um, and, and we'll get into the times and that sort of thing. So to put things in perspective, that's what we're talking about today mostly. Uh, my wife Jen and I, uh, do relatively limit the, uh, amount of riding that they do. All five children attend school here in Sutter Creek, so Monday to Friday during school hours, as of right now, they're in school and they would get home, you know, right around the three o'clock hour-ish and we would permit them to ride for about thirty minutes or so. The attention span of these kids isn't long enough to ride for hours on end, generally speaking, and so they'll take breaks and they'll ride again for a period of time. Um, with respect to, uh, the violations and, and, um, what we've received from code enforcement, December first, a administrative citation warning was drafted and we received that in the mail on the seventh. Our knowledge at that point, my wife and I, um, we received the administrative warning. Prior to that, we have a relationship with one of the close neighbors, uh, identified in that map and that's our closest neighbor. Um, in her complaint, she said that she, her property line's about a hundred feet away. If you Google map it and use the distance calculator, three hundred feet, so it's a little off there, but anyway, that, that distance is, is there and, um, and we'll get into some of the complaints that she listed there. However, we've been on the phone with her, um, for several months, uh, shortly after we moved in, um, we, we talked to her on a regular basis. She spoke to my wife mostly. Um, at one point during all of this, she, she did express her, um, concern about the noise and, and how it irritated her, um, she expressed that on multiple occasions. Um, and she suggested that we come up with a, uh, a timeframe that would work for everybody, work for the kids, work for us. The timeframe that she proposed was a one-hour riding time around three to four in the afternoon on a Tuesday and another one-hour riding timeframe between three and four on a Thursday. That would give our children two hours of riding for the entire, uh, week and nothing permitted on the weekends. That was her side. We told her that that wouldn't necessarily work for us, our schedules and everything else would really equate to almost no riding for our children on our property. So, um, that was mostly the discussion between her and that's the only neighbor that we've received any complaints from. With respect to this warning, when that came in, it addressed the noise violation, uh, the noise ordinance violation, how it's very subjective and I'm sure I could pull everybody in this room and as many people as we have in this room would have a different opinion of what would violate that policy. And I believe that that's what brings us here today. When I received this, um, administrative citation, um, through the Records Request Act, I pulled the five calls for service where deputies were notified by neighbors and I'll get into that in just a minute, 'cause I think that that's pretty telling as well and was brought up just a few minutes ago. Um, there have been two times where a deputy responded to our house, two different deputies on two separate occasions. Both of them indicated that there's no violation, that there was no police report written, nothing documented, and that was said to us and I'll get into their, um, incident history notes, but it reflects the same information. So up to this point, we've had one neighbor who complains to us, several other neighbors have our phone number and email, they haven't complained to us. We have had two deputies that responded to our house and both of them said, "You're a tax-paying citizen of this county, there's no violation here, goodbye, have a good day." To my knowledge, that was communicated to the complainants as well. Um, and then we received, um, or I filed the, the appeal and code enforcement put a packet together, which I'm sure that each of you have a copy of. I received fourteen complaints, this morning I learned about the fifteenth one. But of those fourteen complaints and a code enforcement timeline, which I'd like to address with you as well. According to the code enforcement, uh, timeline provided by the code enforcement, they became aware with the first complaint filed June twenty-third of last year. The next, um, notice to them on this timeline involved two videos, uh, which I have not seen, but they're dated eleven-three and then they put a timeframe of eleven fifteen to eleven-thirty in which they discussed the five complaints. And then it goes down a little further, uh, from July ninth to current, code enforcement and, um, and, uh, others have been aware of the complaints. So it seems like on the code enforcement side, there's been this knowledge that's existed for some time of a violation and an issue. As far as my wife's concerned, we've had one neighbor complaining and two deputies that have come to our house and said, "No issue." So there's, that's something to, um, that I can get into, uh, in, in greater detail shortly. Uh, as far as listed in that code enforcement, um, document regarding the appeal, exhibit four has the fourteen complaints in it. I'd like to draw your attention to eight of those complaints have no comments listed and why is that significant? This weekend, I had a neighbor reach out to me and say that one of the chief complainants here, the same person that created this timeline that I'll get into in a minute, has been going around soliciting the complaints from neighbors. This individual made a phone call to this one citizen that, that contacted me and this individual said, "My wife and I are not interested in getting involved in this, we don't see an issue here." This complainant went to their house, knocked on the door, and again asked them to file one of these complaints. When there's eight of fourteen complaints that have no comments on them, one of which doesn't even have the box checks, checked that indicates that there's, uh, that the, um, noise directly impacts them, where the questions are, "Can I hear it from inside my house, outside my house?" None of those boxes were even checked. But they're listed here in large numbers of fourteen for effect, to draw effect to, to this problem of a nine-year-old, eleven-year-old, and twelve-year-old riding dirt bikes. Of the fourteen complaints, six have comments and one is from this neighbor that is, uh, lives closest to us. This individual has created a pretty detailed timeline of events of when the bikes were used. Um, however, uh, this individual stated that, um, the most recent violation or, or use, I should say, of the bike was December fifth, so that gives some timeframe as to when this was submitted. Um, she indicated that she hadn't started really tracking this until about October. However, she goes back in time from her memory and provides some random dates in June, July, doesn't believe we were ever using our bike in, the bikes in August. Um, and there's a lot of guessing and a lot of words like "I believe" and stuff like that. In September, there were five days listed, four of which were school days, indicating that the kids were using their bikes to seven PM and beyond, which is unrealistic because our family routine on school nights is the kids are having dinner right around between five and six and then they start their, their showers and all that other stuff that has to take place. So to be riding late in the evening is, is, uh, it doesn't seem accurate there. So I really focused in on the October, November, and December, um, entries that were made by this complainant. And, um, I, I think it's, it goes to this reasonable argument that we're about to have on this whole thing. What is reasonable in terms of noise? One of the dates, October fifth, listed here, three-thirty PM to five PM. That timeframe is a timeframe that people are at work mowing lawns, trimming trees, and doing landscape stuff and other activities on their properties. This isn't late at night when people are trying to sleep or first thing in the morning when people are waking up. People are not waking up to the sound of a dirt bike or trying to go to bed when a dirt bike is, is being ridden. October seventh, forty-five minutes of use, four PM to four forty-five PM. Uh, October sixteenth, twenty minutes of use, a break, and twenty more minutes of use. So I'm trying to understand where the reasonableness or unreasonableness is here with respect to this and I can go on and on, but I think that kind of paints a picture of what this timeframe is alluding to. One of the complainants mentions that this, these bikes are being used every single day, every single day. Well, October fifth, it's documented that they used it, they didn't use it again for, until the seventh, um, then they went from the seventh to the fifteenth of October. There's a seven-day window where it wasn't even used. Um, then there's a twelve-day window between the eighteenth and the thirtieth of October and this goes on and on and on. So it's important to understand, this isn't something being used every single day, eight hours a day, creating a massive nuisance. In terms of, um, it was mentioned in there, uh, in the, um, outline from code enforcement, the sheriff's department is refusing to come back out, um, to address this issue. Something I'd like to point out about that is the sheriff's department will never not go to a residence for a call for service when a crime is being committed. So as I go through these five incident reports and none of them indicate there's a violation of any laws or ordinance, that's why the sheriff's department is not gonna waste resources on going back out to somebody's house over and over and over again. I, I don't think you'll find the sheriff saying, "I'm not gonna send my deputies out to the house when there's a violation."
Could I have our, our county council address that issue because if there's no criminal issue going on, there could still be a violation of, uh, county nuisance ordinance, correct?
Yes, the board can still determine that, that it's unlawful under the code. Yes.
I just wanted to differentiate those issues where it's definitely, it's not criminal.
Sure.
But it could be an issue for the county under the public nuisance ordinance.
Understood. And I think where, um, where all of this is going to, regardless of either side's point of view, is I know I'm personally, my wife is looking to the members of this board to help us decide what is reasonable. My neighbors and I can't come to a conclusion, well, the one neighbor that we've had been in contact with and, and now we're in a point where what's reasonable to me, what's reasonable to the five of you and what's reasonable to our neighbors differs and so I think we're looking for some guidance there. But with respect to the...
I, I have a question for Mr. Matthews.
Yes, sir.
Along that line.
Uh, Supervisor O'Netto, could we let him finish his presentation? Unless you're just asking for clarification?
Well, just information really, I, I guess I, I can wait.
Okay, why don't you hold on for just a second, please? Go ahead, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, sir. Uh, one of the complainants did mention the decibel and that was brought up momentarily during, um, moments ago and I wanted to mention something, I think when we bring, introduce that kind of information into this, there's a lot of information that is missing from there. What device was used, was it calibrated, range to target, all of these other things that could affect ambient noise or anything else that could affect this. So before these complaints come in, we're, we're, we're holding a lot of weight and I don't think that that's happened yet with that information, but I did read that and I, I have, I take issue with that. I mean, it's not a, unlike other things that we rely on where they are calibrated and this is something that is, uh, it would hold up in, let's say, a court, um, that doesn't seem to, to, uh, have a whole lot of weight. There was another complaint that mentioned that, um, it's extremely loud, uh, starts early, ends late, multiple bikes being ridden at a time. Um, you know, I've addressed those already, looking at the timeframe provided by one of the complainants, um, you know, nine o'clock is the earliest, going from like October, when, when a little bit more detail was applied to the, uh, the documenting there. Nine AM was the earliest and it didn't go past six PM. And I've already addressed, uh, multiple riders, we're talking about two or three, generally speaking. There may have been a time or two where an additional friend was there, they rode a fifty motorcycle or something that we had extra, but it's rare, I mean, we usually have the three, uh, children there. Um, it was also mentioned that they're riding on weekends all the time. Well, in October, there were three weekend days that they rode and then November, there were, most of the weekends, they were ridden. But we're talking about forty minutes, twenty minutes, a break, twenty minutes, we're talking about two hours, talking about an hour and a half, uh, at, at any given time. Uh, with respect to the calls for service that came in, um, these are from the sheriff's department, this is, some of this note, these notes are directly from the deputies that they entered into the, the CAD system prior to, uh, closing out the call and I've lined them up with the complainant's, um, timeframe that, that we were riding apparently at that same time. So on November fifteenth, the log, the writing log indicated that the kids were riding from eleven-thirty to twelve-forty, so an hour and ten minutes. Uh, the deputy responded to the address where I immediately noted a sound of people riding dirt bikes on the neighboring property, no violation noted. Um, on November twenty-fourth, fifty-five minutes of riding, starting at ten oh four, another forty-five minutes riding at eleven-fifteen, another fifty, fifty minutes riding at one-thirty. Again, these times are from the complain noting this. Um, it should, it, it was mentioned in the, by the deputy, uh, in that call for service, should be noted that I could clearly hear dirt bikes in the background on call, noise not unreasonable, given the twenty acres of property. Eleven-twenty-eight, um, twenty-six minutes, thirty minutes, and an hour and six minutes, um, documented by the complain for that day. Um, however, uh, this was an anonymous caller and no contact could be made with the reporting party by the deputies. On eleven-twenty-nine, uh, there was fifty-six minutes of riding documented by the complaint and, um, the deputy mentioned they were, um, advised that it wasn't a violation of noise ordinance and suggested reaching out to the homeowners until an agreement could be made. And then there's a, two more complainants, one on eleven-thirty and another one on twelve-one. Um, the one on twelve-one was for twenty-two minutes of riding and the one on eleven-thirty was for twenty-one minutes of riding. So again, it goes back to the point that I'm trying to get at about reasonableness. This is when these deputies are being called out here for twenty-one minutes of riding by a, a nine-year-old, eleven-year-old, or a twelve-year-old. Since according to the log and going from October one to December five, which is what that log generated by the complaint really got into detail and outlined, there were a total of twenty-seven logged entries, riding days, um, in a sixty-six day window. So that's, um, and the, the latest riding time from October one was documented at five forty-five at night, uh, and that was on eleven-six. So, um, that, that's pretty much what I wanted to point out is we're at a point where us and our neighbors do not agree as to what's reasonable. The timeframes that we've permitted our kids to ride on school days is between three and five and on weekends, we're not usually there, but if we are there, um, no earlier than maybe nine in the morning and, um, five at night. And again, that's not all day of riding, that's, those would be the, the window of, that we had permit our kids to ride. If we took the table or the, uh, outline provided by the complainant and just took that at face value and said that that's accurate, which I dispute some of that, but let's just say we did, there aren't any egregious timeframes listed there either. So as a resident of this county with five kids, we've got two years of COVID that we're coming out of, these kids need something to do, they can't be sitting inside watching video games all day long, but they're not riding all day long on the property either. They're attending school, they've got extracurricular activities and stuff that takes them off the property on the weekends. Um, I don't see an issue where there's an unreasonable amount of riding. an unreasonable amount of riding. We just listened to three video, or three audios of dirt bike riding. I, I personally don't see an issue with that. So I'm hoping maybe one of the five of you could educate me as to how that was unreasonable, um, based on the audio from what we saw, and then maybe a guidance on going forward to help rectify this so that we don't have violations. And then the other thing was the code enforcement side of the house had knowledge of this. And again, kind of restating this, my wife and I had one neighbor complaining and two deputies that came out and said there was not a violation. So there's an education piece there that maybe could have helped before we even got to this point.
Can you address just two of the complaints for clarification? One was, um, that some of the bikes don't have spark arresters, and that concern is more in, in fire season.
Sure. Um, that is something I am working on with the bikes. Uh, so, uh, when we first got them, they're all brand-new bikes. Um, they're all twenty-twenty-ones. Um, and I think I even have one twenty-twenty-two. So they're all brand-new bikes. Um, but no, there, there's a couple without spark arresters.
Okay, and the other is dirt bikes being ridden on county roads?
Sure. So from where our house is, um, down the road, a very short distance, is a, um, a gentleman that has been in the bike industry for a very long time. And for the sake of this, I will mention his name. However, um, he is a, he very knowledgeable in bikes, works on pro bikes and, and everything else. And he is an individual who loves having the kids that ride bikes come to, to him in the, um, uh, like on weekends and stuff like that. He's a mentor to them. He works on bikes, teaches these kids how to work on bikes, how to ride properly. So they did go down the road to see him. That's happened maybe three times. Um, but this is not a busy road. I mean, yeah, technically it's a public road, but it's not a busy road. So if that is something to take issue with, that would be, um, that would rest on my shoulders.
All right, I'm gonna ask for board questions, but I'm gonna go to Supervisor O'Netto first, does he have a question?
Yeah, at Surry Junction, it is a county road, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's once, once, once somebody complains about something like that, it, it becomes a problem, Mr. Matthews. You know, if nobody complains, sometimes, you know, unless the sheriff catches you, it's probably not a problem. Once somebody complains, it's a problem. Um, so yeah, they're gonna have to, have to stop that county road. I guess one thing I'd ask, so have any of the mufflers been modified?
Uh, no. Uh, in, in terms of like to sound louder? Modified in a, in a way to enhance their sound?
To replace their, like, a little shorty muffler on, or make, make, make it sound louder? Yeah.
Uh, no, we're, we're not, um, we haven't made any modifications to the bike to make them sound louder.
You all done, Brian?
Yeah, I'll, I'll have more questions. I'm fine. Yeah, I'm done.
Mr. Matthews, uh, you're between a rock and a hard spot. Have you looked into maybe putting noise-canceling screens like they do on people's houses that are, when they move the highway like they did at Buena Vista? Something to mitigate the noise for your closest neighbor or neighbors? Has that even been discussed?
Uh, sure, no, it has not. I don't even know what that would look like. Um, you know, I know like freeways use sound walls and stuff like that. I mean, that would be, um, not something, um-
Didn't they, Richard, have noise-canceling screens they put on Buena Vista on those seven houses?
Yeah, some of them, uh,
So there is a product out there.
Sure.
Most of it was trees that people wanted to try and block the noise and visual. I, I don't know if that would even be something that would be, uh, practical here, but.
I'm just looking for a solution.
Well, along, along the line where, where Pat's going, Supervisor O'Netto, is there, is it possible, could you move where they're riding farther away from that, the complaining homeowner?
So that's next in point. Um, our twenty acres on the south side of the property, there's a flat section of the parcel that is where they do most of their riding. And so, uh, with respect to distance, I think that that's something that, uh, is noteworthy. Um, from our garage to the closest complainant, and this is the same individual that wrote the timeline of when the bikes are being used, um, two hundred and eighty-two feet, according to Google Earth, and that's from our garage door to the closest portion of their house. Uh, to another neighbor that's, um, uh, up the road slightly from us, the next closest neighbor, same point on our garage to their closest point on their house, four hundred ninety-seven feet. From this field that I'm referencing, the south portion of our property, um, to that initial complainant, um, seven hundred feet, and actually to both neighbors, seven hundred feet or longer or further away, uh, respectively. So, and then from that same field to any of the other neighbors, the closest neighbor would be four hundred feet. So that field is where they do most of their riding. Um, we don't have a dirt bike track set up. This is young kids riding around on twenty acres. You can imagine what that would look like. You're just riding in different directions and it's random. It's not, we don't have there is one jump created, but it's over in that field, and it is to give them a little bit of practice on jumps. That's it. There's nothing else in place on our property that's been built up or modified, um, in any significant way.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's a problem, you know?
Okay.
Ask Supervisor Brown or Axe if you have any questions.
Yeah, this is Supervisor Brown. Um, my question is, is you say that you haven't modified the exhaust system, but standard bikes come with a spark arrester, so I'm kind of curious about that. If you haven't modified it, you know?
I'm not that knowledgeable with the bikes, to be honest with you. These are bikes purchased for our kids because they're into it.
Right.
Uh, the individual I mentioned that lives down the street from us, um, that is knowledgeable, not knowledgeable about bikes, said that some of these bikes don't have, uh, spark arresters on them. So, uh, I'm leaning on that advice from him.
Okay.
So, but as far as a modification, um, obviously fire is a real issue in California. We're not looking to have any of those problems, especially on, on our own property. So, um, that is something that, uh, certainly will be in place before the next, um, as soon as practical.
Right.
Supervisor Axe, any questions?
Uh, not at this time, but maybe we want to hear from some of the other residents in the neighborhood.
Questions first, so.
Okay.
Supervisor O'Netto, any other questions before we go to the public comment?
I'll, I'll probably have a few more later on. I'm good for right now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Um, we'll take public comment at this time, if anyone wants to address this issue. Uh, come on up, Dave. Okay. If you could please state your name for the record. Good morning.
Morning. My name is Marion Anderson. And I live directly next door, about three hundred feet away. On February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one, Brian and Jen Matthews moved to Emily Way. They allowed their children to ride dirt bikes on a regular basis on Emily Way, a private paved street, and on their personal property. The noise is very disturbing and not acceptable in a residential neighborhood. One day in the middle of June, I was so tired of all the noise that I made a video of the kids repeatedly riding on Emily Way, less than a hundred feet away from my house at that point. That's how close they get. The girl rider stopped as if to talk to me, so I approached her. I was making a video of why she stopped. I told her I, it was annoying for them to ride so close to my house. She apologized, so I asked her if they rode dirt bikes at their old house. She told me there was one neighbor that was selling their house, and we were not allowed to ride when someone came to look at the house. Clearly, the Matthews knew the dirt bike noise was not acceptable, and that's why they instructed the kids not to ride when the house was being shown. So it does affect property value and being able to even sell your house. If any of us want to sell our homes, we would need to disclose that there is a neighbor that has kids that ride dirt bikes on the property next door. It would not make the house as very sellable if, once it's disclosed. In June, I started keeping records when the kids were riding and made videos based on the constant noise. I got in touch with code enforcement on the eleventh of June due to excessive loud dirt bike riding. Shell Gouther advised me that we needed to have proof that the noise was continuous, which it is. The neighbors started keeping records when the kids rode, and we made videos and sent them to code enforcer, enforcement. November, we were told by code enforcement to call the sheriff's department and have a deputy go out and tell them that they're in violation of the noise nuisance ordinance. Deputies did, but Brian Matthews still allowed the kids to ride. It's hard to entertain guests outside and enjoy the peace and quiet or enjoy my pool because the chances would be pretty good that the kids would be riding dirt bikes. Can you imagine sitting there by your pool, having a happy hour, and all of a sudden it, vroom, 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 start? Pretty annoying. Um, uh, it really gets on your nerves after a few minutes when it's so close. All the excessive noise has caused me to have difficulty sleeping and also have problems with TMJ in my left jaw, causing me to grind my teeth at night due to stress. And in August, my doctor prescribed a sleep aid to help me sleep, which actually didn't even help much. Then finally, on December first, the county sent a warning to the Matthews, telling them they're in violation of the noise nuisance ordinance, and the kids need, and the kids need to con- discontinue riding. Within a week of the kids not riding, my TMJ went away and I slept better. Stress is a silent cause, many medical issues if the cause of the stress is allowed to continue. I hope that after viewing all the proof code enforcement asks for, you will decide that dirt bike riding close to neighbors' homes should not be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Any questions? Anybody?
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I, I had a question for, uh, Mr. Anderson.
Hold on, Brian. We're taking public comment right now, and then we'll, we'll take questions. Uh, who would like to come up next? Dave? Morning.
Morning supervisors. I think it's still morning.
Yep.
Dave Pickett, I live up at Sierra Pines, Amador County resident, thirteen, fourteen years now. Um, I'm certified sound tester on off-road recreation vehicles. And listening to the testimony today, I've heard it before in at least twenty other counties, and have approached supervisor meetings like this where we got conflict. And it's difficult. As I listen to the motorcycles on the audio, you may have heard one type of motorcycle, which is a two-stroke, which had a higher pitch on the sound. The other one seemed to be an adult spike, which is a four-stroke, which has a dense sound. All sound is pressure. And that pressure will send the deep throat sound a longer distance where the two-stroke will only go a shorter difference. Are we following me here? Does everybody understands that? That sound fades. You have more vehicles, you're gonna have a little more noise, okay? But state law on off-highway vehicle, recreation of any type, side-by-sides, ATVs, you name it, is ninety-six dB. That is state law. That is what State Parks, CHP, who are involved in this, is set. Um, I brought one of these sound sticks. It's just a little packet thing. Um, I heard spark arresters, where they have these little tiny holes so they can stick it into the mufflers, exhaust pipes, et cetera, to see if there's any perforations that are made, they're worn out, or they were intentionally modified. So unfortunately, I was unable to bring my sound meter in here. And when I walked in and saw the complainant's decibel meters that the county had put down, sixty-one decibels is quiet because I'm talking right now without modification. All right? So you're twenty-six dB under the law. Private property, public property, BLM-approved, Forest Service-approved, county-approved. There was forty professional race motorcycles at Hangtown National Motocross recently. Ten sound meters around the place. In less than a quarter of a mile, the DBA met property line decibel identification. Now, I don't know if county council here says, uh, excuse me, that's not the right phrase. What is the ambient county set decibel for a property line? I don't have the code here, but is it, is it specifically stated? If it's not stated, then we got a problem.
Well, the ordinance is a noise nuisance ordinance.
Okay, noise nuisance.
So there's no decimal in it.
There's no decibel identified.
Nope.
Okay. Just on the backside, this gets a little hairy because it'll turn into litigation, and nobody wants that. Since it hasn't been identified as a specific one, it's, it's just like where I live. I get the eighteen-wheelers coming down up by dewdrop at four o'clock in the morning. They got their Jake Brake on. And it wakes me up. My dogs start barking. That's the way it goes. But I'm not gonna take sides on anything. I'm trying to do education here. But the DB numbers that we're talking about, that's on this document, are so far below what the law allows it because it used to be a hundred and eight dB was legal. And you guys know me, AMA, American Motorcycle Association, District Thirty-Six Motorcycle Organization, we petitioned the state to drop it to ninety-eight. They wanted it lower, so we compromised it ninety-six with CHP blessings. The entire legislature approved it. And now we have a situation where we've got neighbor against neighbor, and this is always tough, especially for you guys to make a decision on this. But we've got one issue that we're dealing with right now from one situation, and changing the ordinance to affect the entire county. This is, this is, this is testy stuff. So if the current folks have not modified their motorcycles, and Jeffy made a comment asking a good question if it was modified, the smaller bikes that were there, may I ask, minis? Can you give me the size of the bikes for the kids? So three two-strokes, one four-stroke? Okay. So some of those bikes are competition-related, still illegal, but they have to have a spark arrester put on them to ride on public land. Doesn't say anything about private land. I encourage spark arresters in this county especially. The other bikes come, meeting standards, that Honda's probably eighty-six dB, but the street motorcycles are seventy-six dB. That's the law. And these numbers here, we're talking numbers here that's like me standing and talking like this to you at three hundred feet.
You know, I, I forgot your name, but, but you know, the, the noise nuisance ordinance is not based on decibels, okay? So you're making a lot of that. I'm over here.
Oh, I'm sorry, wrong guy.
So, uh, um, you know, that's one sound reading that someone took with something. We don't even know if it's calibrated. I don't see it as real evidence in this case, okay? What I see is what reasonable people might consider a noise and nuisance ordinance, and that's the way the ordinance has been drafted, okay? So.
Okay, um, there were, six, seven years ago, we tried to have a special event down near the, uh, oh, where was that? Ione area, and a permitted event was gonna be taking place there, and they did sound tests, this, that, and the other. That would have a hundred race motorcycles going at once.
That would have been on Irish Hill Road.
Irish, that's the one. And had neighbors that raised heck about it, and, and the promoters stepped back and went away because there was some environmental issues with some buttermilk plant or something. I don't remember. But anyways, in this particular situation, if there's been no modifications to the exhaust systems and they're factory-direct and they're late models, they're all within state law and compliance. Now, on the, if the competition bike, I would add a, um, put an FMS spark arrestor setup on it, it has a longer thing, it'll, it'll cut the sound tremendously. Get down to ninety-one, ninety-two, which is totally acceptable. My snow blower, my wood splitter, other equipment that I have for where I live, makes more noise than these motorcycles. What can I say? Are we gonna start getting complaints because my, the generator over across the street that, because we've been without power for ten days, is going all night long? Hey, that's it. You gotta learn to work together on this stuff. So that's my spiel.
You're sticking to it.
And I'm sticking to it. Um, I'm gonna pass this little thing here because it shows all the different types of spark arresters.
Thank you, Dave. We're gonna take some more public comment if you can wrap up, please.
I think I covered it. I think you guys got it, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Was, uh, Ms. Anderson, before you speak, did, did you wish to speak? Can I, can I get the other people first since you've already spoken? Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name's Lynn Van Tilburg and I live on Emily Way, and thank you so much for your time today. I totally appreciate it. On November twenty-second, I sent a formal complaint to Michelle Gallagher, Amador County Code Enforcement Officer, stating that Brian and Jennifer Matthews allow their children to ride dirt bikes almost every day of the week for several hours. We've been dealing with this noise issue since around March of twenty-twenty-one, and I tried in good faith to ask them to be respectful of their neighbors and that they shouldn't allow the children to ride in a residential neighborhood. The more contact I had with them, the worse it seemed to get with the riding. I tried being neighborly, but they were unreasonable in my opinion. I tried negotiating with them, um, only on my behalf because I said I could not speak for the other neighbors that were calling me and complaining. In trying to come to some agreement, and I added these all up, there were fifty-one texts back and forth with Jen and myself, starting on June ninth through November twenty-fourth. Multiple calls, conversations, and voicemails to Jen. I did voicemails and texts to Brian with no response to any of my attempts to make contact, even though he is the primary caregiver and stays home with all the children. Um, I spoke with a realtor that I knew, and she stated my property is unsellable. Once I just called, it's about the dirt bike riding noise and frequency. And I am the person, I don't, I'm not gonna hide it, that went around to most of the homes asking people. I approached only fifteen homes and everyone I approached was more than willing to sign the complaint form. And in response to what Brian said, most of them did not wanna do comments. They don't wanna do that. You know, they were more happy to check off the box, but the majority all wanna be anonymous. They do not wanna be known. Um, and so that's why they are not here today. I don't know if anybody has joined Zoom. There was two people that might join Zoom, but most of the people aren't, I'll be honest, are not technically capable to do it. I can approach more neighbors if needed. I was never rude. I was never whatever. They never told me to get off their property or anything like that. The residents that are furthest away are approximately a mile that still can hear it up on Dapple. So the other thing is nine out of the fifteen residents can hear it inside their home, which is a big deal. Like you can't sit down and have dinner without hearing it. In my opinion, Brian's appeal letter is not an accurate picture of what really goes on with the number of dirt bikes riding, frequency, and times. When I did the log, I didn't say I didn't do, I said I wasn't really logging it consistently until I kept trying to negotiate and we were getting nowhere. And I did correct, say Tuesday, Thursday, for an hour and a half each day. But that's what I was told, that they went away on the weekends to ride most of the time. But I do wanna give you a couple quick little quotes or whatever from texts, so you'll get a feeling of, there's no way we're gonna negotiate. So on Wednesday, June ninth, Jen responded to my complaint and it said, "Thank you so much for contacting us in regard to the riding. When I woke up before going to work on Monday morning around seven AM and I woke up to dirt bikes riding, I definitely started thinking about the neighbors." That was a seven AM occurrence. And I have it in my phone, so if somebody wants to document it, they can look through my entire phone. On June tenth, she responds again, "I'm sorry about the riding. I'm going to get them under control here soon." Then one time I, in a conversation, I said over there, "Does Brian ride?" And she responded, "Oh, no, that wasn't. That's the seventeen-year-old boy. He's the one on the big bike." Which means there, there are four dirt bikes riding, not on a regular basis, but occasionally. On September nineteenth, they invited other older children to come ride on their property and had at least five dirt bikes riding from eleven AM till four PM and then six PM till seven thirty PM. That's six and a half hours of riding, pretty much continuous because it was the older kids. On October nineteenth, after trying to contact Brian several times, Jen finally responded with, "Honest to God's truth, Brian has a very different approach to country living." October thirty-first, they invited kids over again. This time it was only about three hours and ten minutes of riding, but it started at ten thirty till twelve and then two twenty till five. On the weekend of November sixth and seventh, the children, children rode off and on all day, starting in the morning till dark. And I will be honest, Jen did say that they were gone and it was the mother-in-law or whatever, but it's still, you're letting the kids ride all hours. Finally, on November fourteenth, Jen texted me with a counterproposal which stated that they would ride after school from three to five PM, Monday through Friday, but couldn't commit to when they would ride on Saturday and Sunday. And I said that was not acceptable to ride seven days a week, and I just stopped trying to negotiate at that point. There was no point in even doing it. I will note, even after receiving the formal warning or citation or whatever it was, uh, Brian let them ride on December eleventh, December twentieth, the twenty-first, the twenty-fourth, and January one. Not for long times, but I actually saw the kids riding. And they were riding two on a, on one bike. So they were trying to be quiet, I think. But, um, clearly this, I can't live like this, and I tried to negotiate. So I don't think it's really your job to help us negotiate at this point. It's really your decision whether you feel it's appropriate in a residential neighborhood or not. And I don't feel it's appropriate. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Gene Cumming. I live on Emily Way. I have over sixteen years of backbreaking work invested in my property, as I'm sure all the neighbors that surround us do. Now, when I can't go out on any given day and have a cup of coffee and a conversation with a friend on my property because of the noise, there's something wrong. There's definitely something wrong. Okay, we don't, I don't, I don't wanna live next to Ione Sands Motorsports Park. And that's what it is. Now, you want to say that these four strokes are only slightly louder than a lawnmower and the two-stroke's a bit louder? It's ridiculous. I'm fifty-seven years old. I've worn out ten lawnmowers in my lifetime, okay? Those bikes are louder than any lawnmower I have, and I've never had two to five lawnmowers chasing each other around a circle on the perimeter of that property for hours on end every day. Okay? When I can hear it through a stucco two-by-six wall with double-pane windows and the TV on, it's too loud. And I don't know what kind, what level of contempt you have to have for your neighbors to let this escalate to this point. Is aware that it's bothering the neighbors. You have no, no less than fifteen signed formal complaints from neighbors. They weren't coerced into signing them. They voluntarily signed those. So I don't see, what more I can add to it to say, this does not, this does not take place in Surrey Junction. People move there to retire, such as I. And I can't enjoy my outside. All the animals are gone. Deer, we got a couple deer coming back on our property. Turkey still haven't returned. Birds, squirrels, chases everything away. We can't enjoy what we came up here and busted our butts to build. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Anderson. I'll allow you to come back up now.
I just wanted to say that I'm the person that measured the decibels. I use my Samsung phone to do that. Now, whether that's accurate or not, I don't know. So I really hope that your decision, uh, today is not rendered on that because it could be, it could be a lot, I think it's actually a lot higher. And also, the way the Matthews presented how often they ride, it's really not how it really is. Uh, as far as documentations go, we couldn't sit there every day from the minute they start riding until it ends, writing down every break, how long the break is. I mean, how can I live like this? Especially when, now with the additional two kids they have, there's bigger bikes. Now I can hear it inside my house. My house is three hundred feet away from their house, not from where they ride. They ride in a circle. Brian has, you think they stay in one little section? No, no. They go from the garage this way down to the end and then back again. And they can go as close as, actually to Lynn's house, maybe within fifty feet. So this, there is a lot more to it than how the Matthews are telling you. They're downplaying it quite a bit. And that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, you're getting these two-strokes out there that are winding up six thousand RPMs, flying around in a circle. We got Shake Ridge on the other side of us. It's hitting Shake Ridge and bouncing back. We've got Dapple on the other side of us, hitting Dapple and bouncing back. We're getting quadrophonic from every direction for hours on end. It drives you mad. I'm, I'm tired of having to leave my property to get away from it. Okay? I have the right to be able to stay on my property, enjoy what I've worked for. You know, if I wanna have guests come over, we can't, any given day, what do you, you know, can't celebrate a birthday or a holiday or have guests come over because of the noise? It's ridiculous. Yeah, I'm tired of waking up in the morning, looking over at my wife and go, just take bets on what time it starts today. This is not, not in a residential area, but you can go thirty minutes up the road to Pi Pi Valley. They got a hundred miles designated for off-road bikes. You can go out there, they got picnic grounds, they can go out there, have a picnic, do their whole thing out there. I used to ride. You know, I rode for twenty-five years, but I never did it in a subdivision. There's places to go. You can go to Bear River Reservoir, hundreds of miles of trails up there. You don't need to sit there and, and, and serenade your neighbors with this kind of obnoxiously loud noise. And I don't care what, what decibel you're, you're calling to live with the next to your house, you know? It's, you know what I mean? It's not right. I don't know why, why you would, wouldn't wanna do this to your neighbors. It just makes no sense to me. It really doesn't.
All right, thank you. Do we have any, any, um, money on Zoom?
Not at this time.
I just had one comment come in from someone that said, uh, for people to move to one of the highest value residential areas and have no concerns about their neighbors, I do hear some concerns, but I'm not sure it's enough, to tell you the truth. This type of activity definitely affects property values. So, um, that's one comment. I don't know if board members have received any others. But, um, any board questions or comments? Uh, let me go to Supervisor Arnetto because, um, Brian, you had a question, I believe, for Ms. Anderson?
Yeah, I just, I thought while she's there, it'd be easy to ask her. Is she the, she's the lady that put together the, uh, list of, uh, dates and times that were, that the bikes were being ridden?
No, um, ma'am, you put them together. Could you come up and identify yourself again for Supervisor Arnetto?
Supervisor, my name is Lynn Van Tilburg.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. And that's, that's, it looks like a pretty thorough list, would you say?
Um, it, it's pretty accurate. Like I said, I didn't write down every time and I didn't really start doing it until towards the end when I was getting so frustrated because we couldn't come to an agreement in my negotiation with Jen. But, you know, there's times that I left the property, there that I was gone, I was traveling, so some of those times, I, I don't know. It's as accurate as I could be.
You mean your negotiation with Brian, right?
No, with Jen, because Brian never responded to any of my texts or any of my phone calls. So it, only my dealings was always with Jen, and she said she would talk to Brian.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Arnetto, do you have any other questions?
And I think you talked them about as far as you're okay with like, uh, one hour on Tuesdays and one hour on the afternoon Thursdays is kind of what you thought was reasonable as far as trying to.
I said, I said maybe an hour and a half, like when they got home at three to, you know, four-thirty or something. But I also said I could not negotiate for the other neighbors, and the other neighbors actually were angry with me when I asked, told them I was gonna do this. They said no. And so, you know, I can't negotiate for other neighbors. But to me, I, I still say, I wouldn't, I don't wanna hear it, but I'll leave. I'll go, you know, I, I have a consulting thing I do with the board. I could go do that. I could do some other stuff. I would just plan my time to be away. And that's really unfortunate, that I'd have to leave my home.
Well, I've got, I've got neighbors that ride professional motorbikes not too far from my house, actually, and, and I can hear them pretty well, and I just think here are some kids over there having fun, staying out of trouble. Um, I think what's going on up where you're at is probably excessive of the amounts that's been ridden, but one thing I do think about too is I look at how many kids anymore have with COVID or, or they can't too hard to anything, it seems like, like they, not as much as they could. Um, if you want kids to be healthy and happy, they need an activity. I, I think what they're doing up there is probably more than they should be doing, but to say they can't ride a motorbike at all at their house, I have a real problem with that. Not saying you're, not, not saying you said that, but it's like some of the neighbors are taking that approach.
Okay, I, I understand that. I guess my question would be though, after talking to a realtor, if I had to say that these kids are riding and it's a motocross track next to me, my property is unsellable. It's not even the value. It's not even devalued because who in their right mind would buy my home knowing what's gonna go on next door? And, you know, it's three to four-thirty on Tuesdays and Thursdays. What about the summer when the kids are up all day long? And I, I guess what really broke it down for me was when, um, Jen said she couldn't commit to the times on the weekends. I didn't, you know, the, their counter offer was Monday through Friday, three to five, but couldn't commit to the times on the weekend because they have busy schedules. So I would be leaving my home when? I don't know. I don't wanna listen to it. I could have people come over and they could decide they're gonna ride then. So that was part of the problem too. Our communication totally broke down.
Okay, well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other board questions or comments?
Well, I'd like to make a, a comment, a formal statement. Um, I'd like to introduce myself to the Matthews. I am your district supervisor, Frank Axe. I do live in Surrey Junction too. And, um, um, you asked what's reasonable, um, you know, unfortunately, I don't think a residential area is a place for riding motorcycles. I'm sorry. You know, you are.
For clarification, since you live in Surrey Junction, could you say that this doesn't, the noise doesn't affect you where you live?
Um, I believe I can hear them. I live a half a mile away, so I lived outside the zone. I didn't actually go down there, but on times, you know, it was like a Saturday afternoon, I could hear what sounded like motorcycles.
Okay, so I, I'm just pointing out that it doesn't create a, a conflict for you in making a decision here?
No, no, but there is actually somebody that rides close by me. It's not the Matthews. I know that because I know the property, and actually they're riding all over other people's private property. So that's, that's an issue. But as far as, uh, you know, I, I don't, this is a residential area. You're on twenty acres, but a lot of your neighbors are on five acres. They're close. This is, um, this is probably not the primary use of a residential property. Residential property is for sleeping, cooking your meals. It's an oasis for you to go and recharge, um, and I think, you know, getting away from it all. I, I think compromising is, um, I think that's, that ship has sailed. I don't think there's real opportunity for that. It's just gonna keep involving code enforcement as a, um, you know, as, you know, someone to oversee everything, and that's just not fair to them. You know, yeah, kids have, kids need things to do. I used to play football. I used to play baseball, catch, frisbee, archery, um, you know, we didn't. catch, frisbee, archery. Um, you know, we didn't really have video games back then. And, um, yeah, there were kids that rode in our neighborhood, but they, I never really heard them because they went somewhere else, and I think that that's probably the appropriate place for them to engage in these activities. I think that, you know, you get into a, a, a neighborhood that's much more densely packed, and, um, you know, you're gonna have a real problem. And, um, you know, if you're not willing to enforce the code, and the code is pretty clear, um, you know, I, you know, there's no point in having it. So I'm sorry. I'm sorry I, I have to say no to you, but I think that this is not, um, the appropriate place for this to happen. Sorry. And I, I do believe it's noisy.
Yeah, Supervisor Brown?
If you'd like, we can take a little more, I saw a couple of hands. Would you like to hear more public comment first?
I don't. Um, I live on one acre. I have motorcycles. Uh, my son, who's now thirty-one, is of, the January second. Um, I still have his little bike that ran around my property. It's just on one acres. And so I understand the sound problems, and I've contacted all my neighbors if we had any problems. But I also have forty acres behind me on mine that is not residential, but it, what's up to residential. And they're always inviting the boy scouts, everybody else in the kitchen sink, I think. Um, and they also go out shooting behind my property. So I, I understand it, but that is, to me, it's also part of living up here. It is part of living out in the country. Um, I have operated tractors. I have a tractor on one acre of property, because I don't want to shovel snow. I sit there with my tractor at oh dark thirty and, and so I can get up and be, see just about the time. But get up early in the morning so I can shovel my driveway, so I can get out and get to work. So I have a little bit of a, a problem. I think there should be some compromise here. But, um, outlawing motorcycling on private property, on that's, you know, especially that size of property, you know, I, I, I disagree with it.
I would say what Jeff Brown said is exactly where I'm at. I think it's too much for the neighbors, but I don't, I don't wanna, I don't want to make it where can't be done. Um, I really don't, I really don't want to make a decision on this. I don't, I don't want to be forced to by either party. Um, I think the two parties, or I, I think the Matthews need, um, tell their boys you can still ride, but you gotta cool your jets, and you don't ride as much, not as many days. Just, um, I, I, I sympathize with, I, I, I understand this is a rural county. We do rural activities, even in residential areas sometimes. But I think what the Matthews is, are doing up there is probably too much.
And if I may, if I may add, um, one of the complainants was adding, talking about like Bear Vout, you know, Pi Pi, and that they're closed from November first through April first. Okay, so there's three, a quarter of the year, that is, you can't ride, so.
Well, they're closed for fire too. They all, basically, most of the summer.
And this year, we closed them for fire.
Uh, I've been sitting here, listening to this whole thing, and, uh, I agree with Brian that you put us in a tough spot to have to make a choice, because you're both right and you're both wrong. It's a really unfortunate, but I hate to see the communication have broke down. I would, to myself, think that two days a week for an hour and a half is, all you can ride is rather strict. And we can't commit to on the weekends is rather nebulous, so you're stuck. My idea would be, you said you own twenty acres, Mr. Matthews? Is there a four-acre park that's the farthest away from all the neighbors that say, okay, fellas, you can only ride in this on the weekends, or walk it with your neighbors and figure out where, somewhere they would be happy? Because I really don't want to make a decision either, but it's a residential area. Yeah, go ahead. I want to hear from you.
You know, Supervisor Crew, let me just jump in here. Sometimes you have to make a hard decision.
I know.
Sometimes you just have to be tough. Can you be tough?
Yeah, I can be.
I don't think so.
Mr. Matthews?
You gotta be logical too.
Sir, to, to answer your question, the, the one section of our property that probably is the furthest distance from anybody is that one flat parcel area, but it is still close, according to the Google Maps, uh, measurement tool, four hundred to seven hundred feet respectively to our neighbor.
I put the map up there on the, and if you want a laser pointer, I've got one here. We're here.
Some laser pointer?
Just use that, that red button right there.
So typically, the bikes come out of the garage here and are ridden over here. Uh, but to stick to this area, this would put us about four hundred feet to the closest neighbor, and seven hundred feet respectively to our other two neighbors. That's the furthest that we can be from anybody else. I mean, so they could, in theory, walk their bikes over here and fire them up here. I mean, that's the, the loudest use of the bike is the starting up of the bike, turning the exhaust out and, and moving on.
Um, no, the loudest use of the bike is when you throttle it out full, full, full force.
Well, we can break it down by two-stroke and four-stroke, and a four-stroke-
Whatever.
Well, no, it's, it's, starting them up is, yeah, it's loud, but, uh, Mr. Matthews, I mean, when you, when you, when you're out wrapping the throttle, you know, goose, goose in a bike, it's, this is louder when you start them up louder. So I mean, it's, it's not like when you first start them, the loudest time. Uh, I, I don't go for that.
Well, you're kind of making the case both ways, Supervisor Onetto, and I, I think we can't-
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, when you start it up, that's not, that's not the only time a bike's loud.
Okay, I'd like to hear from, if you're done, Mr. Matthews, or do you have anything else?
I was just gonna say, that's not the only time they're loud, but that's when they typically get to a higher RPM. I mean, there are times where the bikes rev up to a higher RPM, sure. But as far as the regular riding, I mean, I, honestly, I would invite anybody that wants to come out to the property, see exactly what we're talking about. Um, you're welcome to do that. There's, I don't have an issue with it. And you can hear each individual bike. You can hear it ride and make a determination. We've, we've gone back and forth on so many different, um, points of view, and we had sound experts, and we had, uh, opinions and everything else. Uh, we could hear it, uh, for ourselves if you wanted to come out.
Could you return that over there? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Pickett, if you could come on up, you had more comments? But I'd, I'd like to, you to limit your comments. I think we know your position already.
Okay, but this is yours.
This is in the throw at me, right?
Oh, I'm not gonna do that. I'd like your Mrs. Tilburg.
Yep.
I'd like to, I make a request that you postpone a decision, and I would like to offer the option to go to our friends here and those friends and take meter readings under those conditions, and then take a look to go, what you suggested is, can we relocate the recreation activity to a different place? There's gotta be some way to find some balance here. I will talk to these folks afterwards about how we can get those two strokes quieted down a little bit. Um, that's up to them.
That, that might, that could be helpful, yeah.
Okay.
But Davis, not really about the decibel level. It's more about the discomfort or annoyance to any reasonable person of normal sensitivity as the code states.
Well, the noise is an issue. The noise is an issue, right?
Brian, Brian, can we have Mr. Pickett finish, please?
Um, Supervisor Forster, there was a case with the Los Angeles National Forest down there, and a homeowner, a similar situation. And it was, there was tests that were taken on her front porch, and these motorcycles were three miles away, and it was just like talking to you and me. And it, it didn't work. They're not gonna close down the United States Forest because of one noise complaint. It sounds like both parties are trying to work here, uh, together, but this affects the whole county, not just Surrey Junction down there. I had a question. I thought all the parcels down there were all twenty-acre units, but they're not. Because Supervisor Axe said five acres and others.
Those are actually pretty special-
Right.
-parcels down there.
Anyways, um, that's what I wanted to say. Um, uh, Pi Pi is, was discussed by Brian Onetto. Um, there is the three, four months or Jeff did, and same thing with Bear on the backside, so there's no place to go. I have been working with Justin at ACRA, trying to get them a grant, which the state has said, yes, we'll do it. Amador County offers zero off-road recreation facilities in this county. And we're working on getting grant money to get a kid's place to go a sizable feature. And I'll keep you abreast on that as we move forward. The money is there by the user community. And then that might help this situation. Thank you for the second option to speak.
Thank you, and I'm gonna allow any further comments before we go to board deliberation. You don't have to, but-
I just need you to consider that, uh, oh, by the way, could you put the picture up of the property with the, with the six houses? Where's the pointer thing?
Ma'am, you're gonna have to step back to the microphone so we can hear you. You can use the pointer from there. Thank you.
I'm new at this.
Doing good.
Okay, um, this is my house, and this is the Matthews, and you have your three neighbors here. Here's where they ride. This is the garage out here. They rev them up like motorcycles do. My son rode, so I know about this stuff. They come and they ride within, I would say fifty feet of Lynn's house, go through these trees, up here, and then they come around, and they go the backside of their house and back around, and this goes in a circle constantly. I've actually seen Brian stand right here, and one motorcycle on each side of him, so they can race down towards the far end, and I thought, holy crap. So it's, it's a lot louder than what the videos showed, a lot louder. And for us, all six, not being able to even sit outside without having to hear those noises, even if it's for fifteen minutes, if you had to listen to it, fifteen minutes every hour, and then it starts up, it gets on your nerves. Trust me. I mean, look, I'm, I don't even do this, but I am so furious that I, I just, I just, I don't know. I give up, actually.
Thank you. Any further comments? All right, I'm gonna take it to the board then for further deliberation. Any other comments? I haven't stated anything yet, so I'm looking at the code. And under C factors for consideration, there's eight items there. And I think you can take at least four of them and, and say that they're significant here. Um, had this happen at my place, and I live out in the country. I live on five and a quarter acres. I own another six beside it. Um, the neighbors next door have been great people. It sold. The person that came in basically created a little racetrack, and on there, I think they have about seven acres. But they were using one ATV, and believe it or not, the other kid was driving a lawnmower around behind him. Well, this was during summertime too, so you can imagine the dust that it created, the noise. Um, I don't think people realize the disruption it causes to your life. That's why we created this ordinance, and it's not pervasive. Uh, these cases aren't brought to the county very often. But the ordinance is there for a reason, and, um, that's why I'm going to take the position I'm taking today. At this point, if there's no further comments, I would need a motion from the board. We have, uh, before the administrative appeal hearing, Board of, Amador County, Board of Supervisors of California, findings and determination. And the last thing I'll say is, is just, I think the time for compromise is, is past. It sounds like the parties have come to an impasse. Uh, even Supervisor Onetto said, stated, the riding appears to be excessive for what the neighbors can tolerate. I hope I stated that right, Supervisor Onetto?
I think generally, but, um, I don't want to ta, it's, we're, we're a rural area. And some people do up here, um, I think what they're doing up there is too much, but I don't want to say they can't ride motorbikes on their property.
Okay, so you think what they're doing is wrong, but you don't want to say it's, you don't want to vote that way? That's what I'm hearing.
I wa, I wa, I want to postpone it and take Mr. Pickett's advice, see if there's something to modify those bikes, make them quieter. Um, and also, I think the Matthews are, they're gonna have to, um, ride less on the property.
Well, I think, I'm pretty sure I know how the board, board's gonna vote today based on the comments, and I think this issue will be back before us at some point. So I'm looking for a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to uphold the, uh, the findings of code enforcement on this matter, and, um, to basically deny the appeal from Mr. Matthews.
Is there a second? And I'm gonna pass the gavel to the vice chair, and I'll second the motion. But you have to act on it from there. All in favor?
Aye.
We have a roll call.
Have to do a roll call.
Excuse me?
Thank you, Chairman Forster.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown?
No.
Supervisor Onetto?
No.
Supervisor Crew?
No.
Supervisor Axe?
Aye.
And the motion, motion fails. All right.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I make a comment?
Well, what would you like to do?
I'd like to address Mr. Matthews.
Come on up, Mr. Matthews.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Brian.
I'll tell you where I'm at, Mr. Matthews. I, this, what's before us has ramifications countywide. So I, I don't, I didn't want to vote yes on it. But I think, um, this thing may, if, if you, if you don't, I think have more respect for your neighbors, I think it will come back to us. I don't want to see it come back to us. Um, and with these type of, uh, numbers that, that the lady provided us, I, I think, um, riding a motorbike, you know, the fourth, November fourth, sixth, seventh, thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth, twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth, uh, you know, December first, second, third, fourth, fifth. Hey, I mean, I got neighbors riding motorbikes. I got a son riding a motorbike. I support riding motorbikes. It's a way to keep kids out of trouble. But you also gotta try to keep your family out of trouble with the neighbors. So my advice is modify what you're doing some, as much as you can. Talk to Dave Pickett, see if he can make those bikes quieter. Um, talk to, I mean, Lynn, Lynn Van Totenberg seemed very, very reasonable. Um, you know, in her approach, I think you need to talk to her and see if there's something you can come up with. Try to find that happy medium, um, work with your neighbors, more, more than you have.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Well, I'll say something before you leave. I think this issue will be back before us, because let's face it, we were kids once too. If I was a kid with a motorcycle, I'd want to ride that motorcycle a lot. Um-
Yeah, but I think you gotta-
You're trying to be respectful. I understand that. But, um, your neighbors have property and rights too, and prop- their property values are definitely gonna be affected by this. If the, the riding continues at the extent that it's been going on. And I'm not sure, you know, if, would I wanna buy a house if I knew there were, um, there were kids riding motorcycles on the property next door? Probably not. Cause I've dealt with it in one time already, and, uh, it's just not, it does affect your neighbors pretty extensively.
May I respond to that, sir? Okay, so going back to the, uh, testimony I provided earlier, up to the point where I received this, uh, appeal packet. Um, I had one complaining neighbor and two deputy contacts. So our knowledge of the extent that the disruption was taking place was very different than what's been painted here at this point. So, and then Mr. Pickett brought a good point up, and I know that this isn't a, a situation having to do with decibels. We're dealing with a ordinance that doesn't have to do with that, that has to do with reasonableness. So I understand that. And as far as modifying our bikes in a way that would make them quieter, I'm not opposed to that. Even if there's a monetary cost associated with that. The one neighbor that we did negotiate with, or, or, well, I, we failed in negotiation with. There was a lot more conversation that I didn't get into today, cause it's just this back and forth banter, and it's not gonna work to anyone's advantage to air all that out. However, uh, in light of the additional people that have gone forward, come forward and expressed their opinions, we're not opposed to it. Some of these neighbors have our phone numbers and emails, and they just never reached out to us. We've had one complaining neighbor. So now that things are a little bit clearer, I have no problem restricting our kids' use of the dirt bikes. I have no problem restricting the use of the two-stroke to some extent. I have no problem working on this matter. I'm not looking to be a difficult neighbor. We moved here a year ago, less than a year ago, and we plan on staying for a very long time. So we're not looking to create problems, although that picture was painted that we're this nuisance neighbor, and I understand where they're coming from on that. So as far as the, um, the way the vote played out and, and, uh, recommendations and comments, you know, I respect that, and I don't have a problem with that. We can work with this.
Well, hopefully you don't end up back here, but, uh, well, I wish you the best. I'm trying to resolve this with your neighbors, um, so it doesn't end up back before us.
Gentlemen, thank you.
All right, thank you. We're gonna move on with our agenda then, um. Yes, Michelle.
So just to get direction from the board, what are you gonna consider if I continue to get complaints? When are you gonna feel is gonna be an adequate number for it to issue another, honestly, it would be a warning again. Uh, what are you gonna feel is gonna be appropriate, so I kinda know?
Well, any timeline I give is gonna be somewhat arbitrary, so I, I don't know for sure, Mr. Dela.
There's, there's no definite answer. I mean, the ordinance is sort of a time plays manner. So however you vote, you're not necessarily saying you can never ride motorcycles. You just are voting that to the extent they were riding, um, was vi- was in violation of this ordinance. And maybe less is not a violation. So I, I, you know, I, I can't tell you where that level is.
I would say about a quarter, about three months, and, and we'll assess it from then, but my, my vote wasn't the intention to never, never ride dirt bikes there.
Correct. I just wanna make sure that whatever you guys.
Property owners, but I don't wanna abrogate the rights of the adjacent property owners either.
Yeah. No, I just wanna know what you're gonna consider is gonna be bringing it back up before you.
I mean, let's look at something reasonable. I think three months is a good time to assess, and hopefully they can come up with some compromise in that time.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move forward with our agenda. Item five F, discussion of possible action relative to the placement and occupancy of recreational vehicles as temporary dwellings. And who's going to start this one off? Do we have our planning staff, or?
This one actually came from, uh, Public Works Committee. And, uh.
Okay, which is, who is Supervisor Crew and Supervisor Oneto, correct? So Supervisor Crew, do you wanna lead this?
Yeah, we, uh, were asked to look at something about RV vehicles placed, uh, placed in the unincorporated areas with hookups and so on. And we, uh, I think it was Deputy Counsel Glenn Spitzer found the Lake County ordinance, was that right, Greg, for us to review?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah. And, um, we all agreed that, and that it was a logical thing. The question was that the Lake County ordinance was based on, it was after a fire. And they were allowing almost unlimited use of generators without a permit. And we came to it that we should have a, at least a yearly permit and some control over the use of generators. Again, cause you're in a residential neighborhood, cause there wouldn't be a fire. This is just people who needed a place to live. And well, not fire is the only reason they would, so. Hey, the snowstorm, you're moving down, you moved to Jackson Park in my park, you know, in my driveway for a while. So to just, the biggest issue was the noise, imagine that.
I have a long enough extension cord. I can get to your dryer.
Okay. Anyway, that's the nuts in both of it. The rest of it is pretty germane, but whether you wanna have a use permit and whether you wanna include the noise.
And I, I think also the renewal should, I think should, if we, if we did, it should be at discretion of the county.
Yeah, there, if, if you're gonna do this, you need to have them register with the county, and, and it should only be for one year. And then they can renew on a year-to-year basis. Also, I wanna know how water and septic and electricity is gonna be handled. And also, I, I wanna limit of the number, you know, maybe ten of these for, for, to start. I don't want there to be a rush on this. Um, you know, the, I, I, I have serious heartburn that this is, you know, you, you know, you're basically bending and twisting your own code. You know, nothing in a high-density neighborhood. Um, there has to be a clear path forward to them building something there, at actual permanent residence.
The one question I have, maybe this is for planning or environmental health, but did the committee discuss at all? There's, there's, uh, some language in here about their septic, that they would have tied to an existing septic system. So if they're on a property and tie into an existing septic that's already being used by another family, would that overload the system?
That was a question that would have to be, you'd have to look at the.
I, I, really, I need some input from environmental health on this, that how much do you allow? Uh, in a system that's been approved for a finite amount of people when they move into a property?
And that's, that's a good question, too.
And that would, uh.
I, I would, I would agree.
Yeah, if they had to resize the septic tank, then I'm sure that would become cost prohibitive.
Right.
So.
If there is a septic tank, but sometimes there's just a septic field that's been sized for a family of four. And if you tie in another two people, two or three people on that, that could quickly overload the system. I, I don't know exactly on the bottom of the Lake County ordinance. For those who, whose properties cannot currently meet the above minimum health and safety criteria, other options are being considered. Such as placement of your temporary dwelling or another property owned by a friend, so. I mean, some of that stuff needs to be clarified before I would vote to approve any, any ordinance on this. I agree, I agree. It's helping people, and but, and I also agree it, it should be during times of, uh, when problems occur, like fires.
So would we be, you know, the original part, thought on this one, is this where, you know, the house burnt down, or it's under constr- reconstruction? And you would just be temporarily hooking up? But like myself, um, I started a little project in my home in two thousand nineteen, and we still haven't finished it because of COVID and, and my wife's health and everything else, so it's taken us a while to get there. You know, we're, we're at ninety-five percent to wait to get it done. But, uh, so we talk in that type of situation? Or, you know, we do have in other parts of this county where people have, you know, it's their accessory dwelling for a mother-in-law? You know, what do we?
Could be, I think it could be any of the above. And then also, like, I had a, I was talking to a neighbor of mine. He had built a house up in Shake Ridge Road, sold it, bought a place near, near me. And this just came up like just, what, two days ago? Um, and it was talking to him, he's like, gosh, I was gonna build a house, a new house. He said, I'm gonna have to wait, wait a little while. He says, the price of, everything just gone, just out of sight. And he says, he's got, he thought he had enough money, and all of a sudden he realizes he's gotta get, round up a little more money to build his home.
That's what I'm, I see the, the concern there and the issue, Brian, but on the other hand, I hear that from a lot of people, that I was gonna build a house in two thousand seventeen, but I, because of this, and because of this, and this. I mean, every code enforcement issue that comes before us, we hear a lot of reasons why they haven't been able to do things. I just, I don't want this to be a, a, uh, placemat for, for code enforcement hearings. I agree with Supervisor Brown that, yes, if a house burns down, I think that's reasonable. If there's fires that go through and burn houses, I think it's reasonable to allow this. There's gotta be good reasoning, other than, I mean, affordability, it's always a factor. That's why I think you allow multiple years to make this happen, and I agree with Supervisor Axe. It should be a yearly renewal of a, of a use permit.
And I think a limited number of permits, we hadn't dis- we did not discuss that, how many, but ten per year is two per district. I mean, how many disasters you're gonna have? So that was a good idea, too, from Frank.
I'm wondering, like, um, if this should go back to staff and, and run the course, you know, environmental health, you know?
Yeah, land use is probably the place to discuss environmental health and planning.
Let it run around to everybody and, and come back to us in a proper package, you know?
I don't think it was ever the intent for this to be the ordinance, but we just wanted someplace to start. It, the conversation, if I remember.
Okay, okay.
It's in the public works. If it goes to land use, does that create a serial Brown Act violation?
No, it wouldn't.
Okay.
Um, but, so this would have, this, you know, after a, a significant fire, like the valley fire, whatever Lake County did, if they felt they could do it through a policy. This, this most likely needs to be, uh, an ordinance amendment. It's a change presumably to the zoning code to allow these types of dwellings to be used in certain areas for certain time periods for s- for certain things or an unlimited number of things. Um, so the, the way to do it technically is probably for the board to do a resolution of intent, which just sort of starts the process. Um, delegate staff to look at it, probably through planning, land use, um, primarily to look at expanding, I mean, cause we do have an existing, uh, provision, I believe, that allows for a use of a temporary dwelling while you're constructing. Maybe the time is too short, maybe it needs to be expanded, you know, those types of things. It, um, so it, it's up to the board, but it probably needs a resolution of intent to start. Um, but our code does say if you're gonna amend the zoning code, you need a resolution of intent.
Well, I don't know if we know what we're gonna, how.
Or you could, you could just direct staff at this point to sort of work something up and then bring it back. You could do that as well.
I think I'm.
Get a little more focused on it.
I hear the board is okay with that, with bringing back a resolution of intent for the board to vote on and then sending this on for, it's just like, um, other issues that came before land use. It's take, sometimes it takes just three, four months, five months to work through the issues on this, but that, that would give us time before summer hits and possibility of, um, catastrophic fire or anything else. I don't wanna be negative going that way, but that, um.
Uh, Mr. Chair, can I get a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so, something else that's out there too, you know, it's had to happen more than once, but pretty recently it happened again. I had an older gentleman, I've seen him around for years. I don't know if he wants his name mentioned or not, but he's, um, he's, he, he's a contractor, older guy, uh, does a lot of work around the county. Not a lot, but quite a bit. He's an old, older guy. He's slowing down. And he went through financial hard times, and I think that two thousand six, eight, lost his home. So he was, at some point, he bought, he had bought a piece of ground, and he had, you know, had water septic and electricity on it. And he's living in RV, that's all he could afford. And I guess somebody complained, so I guess they kicked him out of, he had to move his RV, so he started living in a little, little small shed. And then I guess code enforcement says, what, what's that shed up there for? And he probably should have told none of your business, but he was a nice guy, so that's why I'm living now. And they say, well, you can't live there neither. He's, I got nowhere to go. He's, I can't, I can't afford to go rent a place. He can't even find them anyway. So I mean, it's just like, that's also kind of a factor out there, too. I mean, we got a homeless problem as, you know, right in, in the state, and, and even in our county. And a lot of it's mental health, but also go try to find a rental anymore, and then look what, what they cost. Oh, my God. Lot of money. So I, I just wonder, is not, not a way to give some people some relief? It's just a thought.
Well, there are resources out there. I mean, I know a family that went through some financial hardship. And they live in their RV now, or in their, probably whatever you wanna call it, but they live over in, uh, at forty-niner, in Plymouth. That, that's how they solved their problem. And they can afford that with their social security and, and retirement income, which is modest. So I, I, I agree. There's people with financial hardship, but, uh, there are programs out there too, to assist people. I don't necessarily wanna be granting everybody the right to, to live in their trailer with, or RV without appropriate, uh, hookups and things like that. That just creates problems.
Oh, no, I think you gotta have water sewer, you know, and I, I think a generator could be a problem, um, you know?
Yeah, e- even if you have water and sewer, sometimes it can be a problem. Fortunately, the Lake Comanche Homeowners Association deals with their, their, uh, association. But they've had quite a few people that have just started living in a trailer, relatives of other people hooked into the septic. So all that does is, um, create problems for overloading the septic system and, and not living by the, the rules of the association, so. Am I hearing concurrence from the board to direct staff to create a resolution of intention and bring it back? So.
What, what does a resolution of intention actually mean, that we're gonna do this? Cause I don't.
No, it just means you're start, I mean, I, from what I,
the way I'm interpreting it is you're asking staff to sort of, um, sort of summarize the options. Do a little memo, show you what's there in the code now, what, uh, and, and you can identify what's deficient, what you may wanna add. You'll have a clear understanding. And then if you, we'll have a resolution of intent there for you to approve if you choose to. And the resolution of intent just means you're, you're now directing staff to work up a proposed amendment to the zoning code that will work through the whole process and then eventually come back to you.
And by?
Then at that point, you can adopt it or not adopt it.
By stating options in your resolution of intention, that doesn't confine you to just those options, correct?
No, and you don't have to adopt anything in the end either. It's just our code, our zoning code says, the way you amend, the way you ever started a potential amendment to a zone, to the zoning code is, uh, either the planning commission or the board of supervisors does a resolution of intent. So it has to start that way eventually, if you, if you want to even think about amending the code.
I'd like to get some more, before we get to that point, I'd like to get some direction from the board, what it is we're trying to accomplish. Do we want to allow people to live in their mobile homes or trailers and RVs? Require that they, they hook up their electric, require that they hook up the septic, but not be mandated to modify the septic tank? Because if we do, if we require environmental health to, to resize the tank, then it's all, uh.
That's an open question. I mean, that's one of the things the committee needs to, the land use committee needs to discuss.
That's what I'm saying. Well, it, it sounded like we were moving right towards bringing it back to the board.
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
No, I think it's gotta run through, as was stated, Public Works has looked at it. I think it needs to run through the land use committee.
Why don't we bring it to the land use committee?
Okay.
As the next step, I agree.
Yeah.
Is that clear enough, Mr. Riley?
Yes, thank you.
All right, board members, I'll concur on that.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Move on to item five G, administrative agency discussion of possible action relative to consideration of a proposed ordinance implementing a salary increase. of a proposed ordinance implementing a salary increase for elected officials other than the board of supervisors. And suggested action is to waive the reading and schedule for adoption on January twenty-fifth. Mr. Riley, you wanna lead on this one? And, uh, Tracy, you and Todd, can you come, come up, cause I imagine you're gonna have to speak to this?
Well, this is the, uh, the, uh, ordinance that was, uh, crafted in response to the direction, uh, when the board talked about this, uh, at the last meeting, um, uh, enacting the, uh, uh, the-
And Supervisor Crew and I were, were the committee that looked at this. You wanna speak Supervisor Crew to the rationale for, um, using the Calaveras as the model?
Sure, um, we were approached, the board was, about a pay increase for five of the elected who are not represented by any bargaining unit. And it was pointed out that we had not, they had not had a pay raise since two thousand thirteen, if I remember right.
Yes.
And we didn't know where to start. We talked about, they figured they were a number of about eighteen percent, which would have been a hundred and fifty thousand and, so we need a little better numbers than that. So they did come up with a survey of five or six counties, which included Calaveras and Topeka. And the pro, they were all over the lot, San Benito and El Dorado and I forget the other one. Anyway, I got looking at it and we talked, Richard, that most of the other counties, the elected officials of the same responsibility all get paid pretty much the same. And we, originally, don't do that. There's like a twenty-five percent swing from low to high. And if you take out the DA, it's still like a fourteen percent swing. So it made it difficult to, so we considered and thought that the best way to solve maybe two problems at once is to bring the electeds up to Calaveras's pay level. And we looked at the benefits to make sure that the benefit packages were very similar. And with that, they would be just below the middle of, or of the, uh, five or six counties. So it's not like we were, it were just going, they were probably in the third or fourth spot of the five, just to get to Calaveras's level. And it seems like a lot of money, except if you, it's twenty-two point one eight percent on the, in the bi-weekly. But if you factor that out from their, the take home, it's about a nineteen pers, nineteen point two. And if you use eight years, that's two point two percent raise over the last eight years. It's just we put it off and now we gotta pay the piper, it's kinda where, is that Richard, is that-
Yep, so you're looking at, you're looking at that, what I would consider fairly, if we had looked at it yearly, the raise would have been, how much, two?
Two point two.
Two point two, um, I look at it that it, it's only fair not to penalize the other elected employees of the county, officials, employees of the county, but to go back and, and make it right from two thousand thirteen. I also look at what we did at our last board meeting, I mean, we passed a capital facility fee of increase of eight, eight percent plus, um, which two of us voted against, but to me, that was excessive to go eight percent at one point. Now we're looking at two point two, just to bring them up to a level that, uh, is fair. And I also think it's fair to, um, put them at a level, other than the DA and Sheriff, which is, uh, who is excluded here. I think it's fair to put the compensation at a level that's, uh, the same. For years, I thought, why is the clerk recorder so much lower than everybody else? I mean, she works her tail off and-
Yeah.
For a lot, a lot of times has to take a lot more criticism than some of the other elected officials. But, um, the other thing this, uh, ordinance would do is look at, um, the approval today would, um, give all six of the elected officials plus the board of supervisors the two thousand dollar premium pay. Uh, all six of the elected officials plus the board would receive longevity pay. Salary of the board would remain unchanged. And all this would be effective date of December twenty-sixth to coincide with the beginning of the pay period.
And I, I forgot to say, and no, it was, it was a pleasure to deal with this group. We took retro activity, retro pay off the table and, so it's just moving forward. So the first year would only be, uh, six months payment.
I'm gonna ask, um, DA Reby and-
If I missed anything?
Auditor Controller Onetto Rooney, if you have any comments?
I don't, I, I would just echo what Supervisor Crew, I was en route to Colorado for Thanksgiving and I was listening, uh, that, when this was first brought up, but, uh, I was not unfortunately able to be here. But, uh, we were adequately represented by, uh, Ms. Grady and Mr. Rooney. Um, and, and Jim and Kim have nothing but good things to say about, uh, the proposal from Supervisor Crew. I think it was appropriate, uh, to look at our neighbor across the river, who we compare ourselves with, uh, sometimes favorably, sometimes unfavorably, depending on, on, uh, what the issue is. Uh, but, but, uh, I, I, I think that was a, um, uh, a really good solution, uh, to the issue and was one that was unanimously instantly agreed upon by, by all the electeds to look at our counterpart across the river, rather than our counterparts in points unknown, even though there's salary survey counties like Yolo and San Benito, uh, Nevada County, uh-
They're not having anything to say, you're a lot-
Their dynamics, yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. Tracy, you have anything?
I do, I do think that is a very, um, fair assessment of the situation and we just really appreciate your listening to us, thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you.
Just a clarification, all we've got in here today is just the one for the electeds. Uh, we would need to bring a different one back to include the board in the premium pay, a different ordinance.
Okay, um, any board comments?
Yeah, I, wha-
Any zoomers? Any's-
I have, once my turn, I have some questions.
Go ahead.
You know, it said there's no pay raises since twenty thirteen, is, was there no COLAs in or what?
Oh, staff?
I don't have that in front of me.
The reason I ask, I wanna-
I don't know.
I went on Transparent California, looking at one, one of the positions and twenty twenty, it shows regular pay. It seemed a little teeny bit high to me, it showed it being a hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and seventeen. And in twenty fifteen, it showed the regular pay of that person being ninety-nine thousand, ninety-six. And so I thought, well, there've been no, you know, there, there must have been COLAs or something given then, otherwise, unless Transparent California is wrong. Um, but we don't have those numbers before us, I don't believe. Uh, I've been a little bit sick, I can't, you know, a little harder for me to get some of the information, but, um, so I have a little concern over that. And, and, and look at, and there's not been a lot of numbers that I've seen, quite honestly. There's just the fif- fifty-four, fifty-two and then what, and what the, um, what the, uh, county employees make, you know, Calaveras and Amador. But I think benefits are a big, big thing to look at and if Transparent California is correct, and I don't know if they are, but I went and looked up and just looked at different positions, um, oh, a side note, I do believe the clerk recorder is too low compared to other, other, um, positions, eh, eh, whatever we do. Um, the auditor in, the auditor in Calaveras County, they had regular pay of like a hundred and thirteen thousand and change. Other pays six thousand, benefits twenty, pension debt fifteen thousand, um, for total of a hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars in twenty twenty. Auditor in Amador County has regular pay, benefits, pension debt, um, adds up to a total of a hundred and seventy-six thousand, plus some change. Um, tax collector, Calaveras, a hundred and sixty-five total, this is current, current dollars, um, um, twenty twenty dollars. Amador's a hundred and seventy-six thousand. Assessor in Calaveras, a hundred and fifty-nine thousand total pay. Amador's a hundred and eighty-seven thousand total pay. And I guess the question I have, is Transparent California wrong? See, it looks like right now, we're paying more in Calaveras, maybe, maybe not under newest, latest, uh, you know, the fifty-four, fifty-two bi-weekly that they went to, but historically, I think we've been paying more. I don't know if those numbers are correct or not. And then twenty twenty, uh, Calaveras DA was paid total compensation, two hundred and twenty-five thousand and some change. Um, Amador County DA is two hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine fifty and some change. And maybe some of these numbers are wrong, I don't know, cause it shows regular pay is a hundred and fifty-nine thousand for the Amador DA with other pays thirteen thousand, benefits seems high, but maybe it's, maybe it's a sa- safety tier. Um, almost sixty-five thousand, plus pension debt is thirty-six and some change for like two hundred and seventy-three thousand. So I have, I'm having a little heartburn and-
I don't know, I don't know where you got your, your figures, because the committee looked at the, the current Calaveras, um, data on how much their elected employees are paid and it was significantly different than Amador County, significantly higher.
Right, that's, that's correct.
I got that direct, I got from Transparent California twenty twenty.
Yeah.
I think that's, does not include, because it's from twenty twenty, and I honestly can't say whether Transparent California has perfectly accurate information or not, but I know that the Calaveras County elected officials got a, a significant raise in twenty twenty-one. So I believe that that, those numbers are prior to that happening.
Yeah, they did, but what I'm saying is, our, our, our benefits seem a whole lot higher. Cause the pay, like the DA, the pay was actually higher in Calaveras by about three thousand, but the total package is like fifty thousand higher in Amador, um.
Well, we're all, all the county employees are affiliated with PERS for the most part, correct? Including the electeds?
Yes.
Yeah, we looked at the benefit package and I think it might have been the DA gets a car was the only difference.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Uh, the rest of it was all other deductibles and it was all very similar.
Yes, it did look very similar.
Okay, as far as, uh, whether it's a regular two, two percent at fifty or the safety, uh, pension? So the ones, one's a lot more expensive than the other. If, you know, you have a regular pension, two percent at fifty, you know, and then if you get the, what is it, what do you call it? It's like the elevated or the, the safety tier pension, it's, what, was three, three percent, I believe?
Mr. Riley, do you have any comment on that?
I think the DA, you get the, the, what they call the safety light, that the-
Not the same as, as-
It's not the same as safety, it's not the three at fifty, uh-
Okay.
I believe the sheriff does, but-
Supervisor Nato Fico, this is Todd Reby. Uh, I've also looked at many times at, uh, um, at Transparent California and, uh, found that when those figures are compared to the figures that we get by looking at, um, the, the, uh, county data, uh, from, uh, personnel, uh, that they don't match up. And, uh, I've-
Okay, okay.
So we've, that's why we went, wanted to go take a look at our salary survey counties, uh, looking at that data and then double check it, uh, with, um, Lisa, uh, to make sure that it was accurate. And, uh, that was the data that we used for, um, our, uh, our study. And, uh, and, and I believe that the committee looked at that data and verified that it was accurate through the same source that we use, which is why we use that source, because it's a source that you rely on.
I wish they'd put that data in our packet.
I wanted to add that I do believe that there was a COLA for our elected group, I believe it was back in two thousand nineteen, just after bi-weekly was implemented. I believe there was a small COLA.
So that was the only, you're saying that was the only COLA since two thousand thirteen, was, two thousand nineteen then?
I cannot confirm that right now.
But that, you believe that, though, I mean, not for sure, but you think?
She believes there was one COLA given in two thousand nineteen, is that correct? So other, other than that, she, she doesn't know or doesn't have any recollection without going back and looking.
Okay, okay.
So if there was only, if it's only been three years or five years, the fact remains that the pay, bi-weekly pay is substantored to Calaveras and we're trying to rectify that. You can wordsmith it all you want, we're trying to fix it.
And in most cases, it was significantly less than Calaveras County.
Yeah.
Okay, well, and, and then, so I'm not against an increase in pay, um, to the electeds. Um, I will say this, if, if we make it, I'm all commensurate with Calaveras County and then we add in a longevity, um, we're gonna be ca- blowing Calaveras County out of the water. Pay wise.
Okay, any further discussion by the board? Any Zoom comments?
Not at this time.
All right, um, any further comments? No, okay, board members, I need a, um, some action on this.
All right, Mr. Chair, I would, uh, we, we're gonna, I would make a motion, we waive the reading and schedule the ordinance implementing a salary increase for elected officials other than the board of supervisors as presented in the packet for adoption on January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two.
A second.
Second.
All right, motion by Supervisor Crew, second by Supervisor Brown, any further discussion?
Yes, now, is this also including the longevity?
Yes.
Yes, it does.
Cause here's a question I have, if we make the salaries commensurate with Calaveras, the fifty-four, fifty-two, and then if you take twenty-five years longevity, that fifty-four, fifty-two turns into sixty-one, sixty-nine. And I look at, I look at our roads, I look at our Calpers, um, liabilities and I don't see it. I'm not against, I'm not against the increase, I think ones deserve it, I think they do a good job. I think it's too much and I don't, I don't support the longevity, for sure.
We know if Calaveras has longevity offhand?
It's, uh, I don't know. Five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five.
They do?
They do.
So Calaveras has the same longevity, according to, uh-
No, they have a different one, this would make us commensurate with what Calaveras is. Right now, we are at ten, fifteen, twenty. Calaveras adds, has an additional five and an additional twenty-five on their longevity.
For electeds?
For, for all, yeah.
For all, okay.
Well, Supervisor Nato, one thing I can add is, uh, if you're an elected official, sometimes longevity doesn't happen for you.
Oh, that's true.
True.
All right.
Just saying, not that I'm recommending that.
Is any further discussion? And can I have a roll call, though?
Thank you, Chairman Forster.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto.
Nay.
Supervisor Crew.
Aye.
And Supervisor X.
Aye.
All right, motion carries four to one. And with that, thank you very much, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
All right.
All right.
I'm gonna bring that eight percent capital facilities feedback for reconsideration, so.
All right.
Okay, I'll go to our next agenda item, item five H, approval of authorization level granted to the Public Works Director to approve change orders to Public Works contracted, contracts, excuse me. Richard, you wanna come on up? Bring up our Public Works Director? And maybe you can give a quick, um, it's pretty much laid out in our packet, maybe you can give a quick overview of this.
Um, like you mentioned, it's, it's pretty well spelled out and, and the reason I brought this in is, is more for the ease of being able to, to manage these contracts as they go through. Um, to me, minor things, I don't think you guys wanna be dealing with that stuff. Um, it's certainly your purview, if you want to, we can continue to do so. Um, I'm just trying to streamline, you know, recommend this, kinda streamline the, the, to be able to, um, deal with the smaller changes that, that- that can come up on these projects. Um, I firmly believe anything, any significant should come before this board. Um, but to take care of miscellaneous stuff, whatever, um, I look towards the, um, what GSA does and they have a similar, uh, provision in, in their contracts that gives a, um, gives them that opportunity to, to, um, to take care of the smaller change items. So to be consistent with them and to kinda, again, kinda streamline the operation so that every five or ten dollar item doesn't end up in front of this group for consideration.
Any questions? I, I do have one, one question. Um, I'm, I'm, maybe I'm getting over this, I don't know, but I agree, five thousand on a large contract is, is not very much on a change order. But I look at the aggregate, let's say you have a million dollar project, then you, if we give authority for the aggregate five percent of the contract price, you're talking about up to fifty thousand dollars. That, that seems a little more significant, but that usually doesn't, doesn't happen either. Um, so I think I've gotten over that. Uh, anything over five thousand would have to come back to us. Um, isn't that correct?
Um, the way, well, it's, it's kinda, it's an or, so, you know, however you, you would like to be comfortable with that. Again, I just, I'm mirroring the, the language that, that the GSA contracts have.
But isn't the aggregate would be like ten different change orders at, at five thousand? You're not talking about the same change order then, correct?
Um, that's how I would read it, in other words, all of them together would come to that five percent. If you go over that, then-
Right.
We need to come back here and-
That's the way I interpret the aggregate.
Yeah.
So that if you do have a change order that's ten thousand dollars, it would have to come back to the board for approval then, correct?
Unless it's less, that ten thousand dollars is less than five percent. So if it's a two hundred thousand dollar, well, that, yeah, say it's a two hundred thousand dollar contract, you got five percent of that is ten thousand dollars, his authority would be ten thousand dollars.
No, that's not how I read it.
Not how you're reading?
That's not how I read it, I, I look at the aggregate as the aggregate of every change order.
Each change order would have a five thousand dollar limit.
Okay.
And then multiple change orders, so like, if he does two change orders or multiple change orders, they can't, they can't exceed five percent of the aggregate.
What we're trying to-
I read that.
So do we need to clarify that in the language?
I think we do need to clarify that.
Do you think it's clear enough the way it is?
What, especially Greg and I are, well, I, I, I see what he's saying now, but what we're trying to do is change it so that we can expedite these.
I, I agree, but-
Right, that's the spirit of it.
Five thousand and fifty thousand is a little bit different.
I agree, yeah, so that was the, the question is what's the board comfortable with?
I don't want the interpretation from Public Works to be that the aggregate is one change order of fifty thousand on a million dollar project.
No, we need, uh-
Well, yeah, I, I mean, so what you're giving us direction is to change the, sort of the standard template contract. If we ha- if Public Works has a million dollar contract, we may want, the board may want to think about changing the limit for individual change orders, may not. So it, it's really what you're willing to delegate in each contract. This language would go for the routine contracts and, and, you know, we'll work up something that's clear to all of us and we'll insert that into the contracts. But if, if we know that there's a, a very large contract coming down, it, we, we may, we may recommend a modification to that, we may not. And if we do, we'll put it in the staff report.
I don't have a problem approving ten thousand per modification, but I want the aggregate to be, to be, uh, different items then, not the same item being, uh, fifty thousand dollars.
The aggregate, the way I read it is, the aggregate being all of the change orders that you'll approve under a contract being, so you have a per change order amount and then a total of multiple change orders.
So I would want that written up so it's very understandable for future Public Works Directors.
The board, is that the consensus of the board?
Yeah, because for me, I, I've dealt with million dollar contracts before and you can have ten to twenty different change orders. And so it, it can be stifling to, to deal with coming back and, and then getting permission. And so, of course, I was federal and it, it was going all the way to Congress, so it was always lots of fun.
Because usually one change order triggers two others.
Yeah, I'm happy having a, an amount larger than five thousand per occurrence, uh, per modification. If the board would look at that, maybe ten thousand? Yes?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
With a fifty thousand limit though still?
Can you at least, uh, tell us that you did that? I mean, after you, you know, when you did it, just say, just send a, an email or a notice. I did this.
Or may you-
That would be nice, yeah.
Or you could bring it to the Public Works Committees, which we're gonna start meeting more regularly and we could pass it on.
And I'm not trying to hide stuff or try to-
No, no, I understand.
You're trying to get something done. We're supposed to provide oversight, that's all, and so we'll probably go, okay, that's nice.
I wanna give you more, more freedom, not less, but I do want it very understandable what we're authorizing. So, am I hearing that this board wants to go back to the Public Works Committee then? For clarification, no?
No.
I'd take, I mean, when, when the, let's do this, when the Public Works Director authorizes a change order, then a memo is sent to the board that's included in the consent agenda.
Yeah, there you go.
For approval.
Sends a memo to-
Ratification, how about that?
A O or something.
I don't know.
Why don't we have staff?
Then it's not done, yeah.
Staff clarify this based on, and write it up based on what you heard today, take it to the Public Works Committee and then bring it back to the board. That way you have a level of, a couple of different levels of approval before it gets here so that it's acceptable.
Okay, understood.
That work?
Fine.
Thank you, okay with that?
Yep.
You mean just basically writing up what we discussed, maybe a little clarification and bringing it back?
Right.
Right, and then I want-
Okay.
Two members of the board to stamp it and say that it's, it is, um, it is workable.
Okay, that'll work.
Fine, yeah.
All right, so it'll come back to us after that.
Okay.
Thank you, Richard, anything else?
Um, just so I'm clear, I mean, are you looking to change the per occurrence amount as well as clarifying what that aggregate means?
I, I heard the board say they were okay with ten thousand per occurrence and the aggregate amount or fifty, fifty okay, or do you wanna go higher than that?
I'm still okay with the five percent, to be honest, you know, even you get a large contract, you know, things will still happen and so.
I'm, I'm with you, as long as we know the five percent is-
And that's part of our procedure is, is to make sure it-
Okay.
That information is running back to the board through memos and everything else, which Richard has been very good at, you know, keeping us up to date on stuff.
But I want it very understandable though, that, because it was not understandable with the aggregate, so I want that to be written up by county council so that, so that, uh, everybody's on the same page and then Public Works can, can look at that.
The five percent is gonna hurt you when it comes to a twenty thousand dollar contract though, that's gonna restrict his authority to one thousand dollars.
Okay, well, then that's-
Yeah, so we need to, we need to tweak that and figure that-
Tweak it at, at each level that that money, you know, that the gross contract runs with.
Right.
Yep, Mr. Ely, as a former Public Works Director, you can work with Mr. Gelat and then this can go forward to the Public Works Committee. And, uh, Mr. Vila will sit in there and give his, uh, two cents to, his five percent, sorry. All right, anything else? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Side note, Richard, we're supposed to meet today at one, are we gonna move that till probably two?
Um, depends if you, I know Supervisor Oneto is not present.
He's gonna call in.
You can have him call in if, unless what we talk about, he'd rather be present that than we could postpone it, that's up to you guys.
You know what, ma- ma- maybe Pat, maybe we postpone it. Come see, I'm, I'm a little bit, you know, feel a little bit rough and I don't know if I wanna go do another, do another meeting.
That's why I wanted to ask while he was on the phone, because there's nothing real earth shattering.
Nope.
Yeah, there, there's nothing pressing, we, we can put it off, you know, maybe sometime next week or something would be nice.
Or how about right after the next board meeting?
Whatever your preference is.
At the end of mine.
Okay, Rich, I don't know, you, I don't know if you heard this morning, but we also thanked your crews for all the hard work they've been doing up in the up country. It has been very much appreciated.
I know it was a challenge and, and, and I know it's frustrating for, for residents because we're not there right when, you know, can't be ever at the same time and I know we're fighting the issue with, uh, down power lines and, and, and trees and such that prohibited us from getting to places and I know that was some frustration for some folks and I certainly sympathize with them. Yeah, it, it certainly was, but, you know, I, I'm sure everyone appreciates those comments, you know, that-
Very much so.
That comes from the board on that and-
I, I read something on Facebook earlier and really this is pretty telling, um, from a, from some people, we were in Amador Pines today, what a mess. For several hours, clearing driveways, down trees, but I thought the, um, the ice cubes were still loose in the bin, so we know nothing had thawed. On our way out, we caught up with PG&E driver and they said, um, they will have, but we, what will be needed, when seventy-six to seven man crews will be coming to the area of Amador Pines on, uh, Wednesday, so.
Yeah, they, they've, they've got quite a bit of, quite a few crews up there, all the way down to Snowcats, so they're, they're planning on this.
Yeah, they have a much bigger challenge than we do.
How many, how many crews, how many crews you say, Richard?
Uh, what did I say, twenty, six or seven man crews?
Wow, okay, good.
But, um, while you guys are working up there, I'm patching holes down in my area.
You are.
I, I picked up cold patch on, uh, Sunday, so.
Brian, we're gonna cancel today's meeting.
Okay, good, thank you, Pat.
Okay, so, so, so Richard, because this Richard's now working on the road crew, don't cut him any slack, okay?
Yeah. I might have a conflict now, I guess, huh?
Yeah, maybe, I mean, uh-
I, I gained a new respect though, I told Derek this morning that, uh, while I was patching holes, even with the Jackson Valley Fire Chief with his lights on behind me, people were, and I was near the center line, people were still going past me at about forty miles an hour. They just don't slow down.
No, it, it, it's, it's a real issue and, and the guys are out on a, who do this stuff on a daily basis, it, it's a, yeah, and they can tell you stories all the time about, uh, driver habits and, and whatever and then, uh, I'll be honest with you, they probably, they don't get paid enough for what they do. You know, for that, for the risk that they take in that, in those situations.
Well, you hear about a lot of Caltrans guys getting killed all the time and you know, you know why. Thank you, Richard.
All right, thank you.
And so, Richard, just see what your schedule looks like and we can reschedule for next week or maybe we can do it after the board meeting, like we're doing the rest of them, at whatever the, it's three weeks though, till the board meeting again.
All right, don't blame me for the-
Maybe that won't work.
Don't blame me for the length of this meeting because you just extended it to minutes, talking about planning for your-
Well, I'm sitting over by Brian's, like, okay.
All right, thank you, Richard.
All right, thank you.
We have two more agenda items, uh, next is twenty twenty-two committee assignments. Uh, the, the one, uh, changes I see on this that weren't noted were the, under the administrative committee, obviously it's gonna change to Forster Brown. And then under the, um, other appointment section on the section, second page, the administrative abatement hearing, Chair of the Board should change to Forster Brown again.
For me, um, I did put a question mark next to the HAMP ordinance, because I think we already passed that, didn't we? So do we need to maintain that committee?
No, that was a, that was a ad hoc committee in that, that ordinance, that permanent ordinance is adopted, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wondered about that too, if, if it could go by mine.
Yeah, okay, so are we, we okay with this, with those, uh, modifications?
Uh, the only one that Supervisor Oneto and I, uh, talked about was the water, joint water, uh, and reversing, uh, putting me lead and him second.
Okay.
Yeah.
That works okay and Heather, okay with you, Supervisor Oneto?
Yeah, uh, joint, joint water, let's see.
And the other, you can see the changes that were made here, the, um, LAFCO now has Supervisor Axe and Crew as the, as the, uh, members', uh, appointments and, uh, myself as the alternate and Chamber of Commerce Supervisor Crew will be the representative and I'll be the alternate on that. So if the board concurs with, um, those changes and the, the ones that were noted, then, um, can I get a motion on this? Sorry, yeah, I moved. Second? Who made the motion? Supervisor Axe, and you made the second? Motion by Supervisor Axe, second by Supervisor Brown, roll call vote.
Thank you, Chairman Forster.
Hold on, any public comment?
No. Not at this time.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Forster.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Supervisor Oneto.
Aye.
Supervisor Crew.
Aye.
And Supervisor Axe.
Aye.
Our motion carries five to zero. And our last item today will be the minutes and these are the minutes of December fourteenth, December sixteenth and December twenty-eighth, the last two being special meetings. Um, I have minor changes on the December fourteenth minutes, other than the one that's not so minor under, uh, regular agenda items, Chamber of Commerce. I think Mr. Rich Hoffman's name is spelled wrong twice there, I think it should be H-O-F-F-M-A-N.
Correct.
And then the other changes are just, the other corrections are just minor. I don't believe I have any corrections on the special meetings.
I'll make a motion then to approve the, um, regular meeting minutes for December fourteenth, the special meeting minutes for December sixteenth and the special meeting minutes for December twenty-eighth.
Second? And that motion included the, uh, changes to the December fourteenth minor and, uh-
Yes, implicit in my motion was that, but I'll state it explicitly now.
All right, thank you.
You should have read my mind.
With that, uh, motion, uh, roll call, please.
Thank you, Chairman Forster.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Supervisor Oneto.
Aye.
Supervisor Crew.
Aye.
And Supervisor Axe.
Aye. All right, with that, um, Supervisor Oneto, thank you for zooming in when you weren't feeling so hot, I'm glad you were able to, to join us today. And, um, any other business come before us? Then we are adjourned.